And things like that because of the, the big idea and, and challenges you guys have taken. First year was good. Second year I had some exotic cars. I had a Mater in my parking lot. If you've ever seen cars Mater, it was, it was the real Mater. Like that rusted and everything. People were taking pictures. I had two Ferraris, Lamborghini. They wouldn't let me have it, but they parked in my parking lot. So what I'm saying is this year it was even bigger. I had people parking. They would say it's so big over here on Broadway that I gotta come back now. I'm gonna go down by City Hall on the older cars and then it was kind of big over there. So then I'm gonna go to Laguna and then well, after that, I'm gonna head down Del Monte and go to Monterey and, and Alvarado. And, and then if you were fortunate enough to, to go on Sunday, then you could go where, where all the, well, we had nice cars too, but all the nice, nice, nice cars on the golf course. Oh, by the way, that, that was a full county communal type of thing that is done. So I'm asking that you would continue it and in the future, maybe us other future nonprofit entities can help the city continue to raise funds and make our city a great impact in California. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name is Laura and I'm here to speak on behalf of having Exotics on Broadway in our city. Imagine growing up in a city where people say you don't deserve the best, where events are taken away, opportunities are pushed somewhere else and your community is told to settle for less. That's what my reality was growing up in Seaside. I was raised by a single mother. We didn't have a car. We couldn't even afford bus money. So we walked everywhere, the grocery store, Monty Mart, the laundromat and even the beach. And yet with every step I dreamed, I dreamed about what it would be like one day to own a car. That's why Exotics on Broadway is so meaningful to me. It gives kids who may grow up like me, a chance to dream about not just owning a car one day, something bigger, something extraordinary, like a luxury car. This event shows what's possible and inspires people of all ages. What's remarkable is how highly anticipated this event has become. People travel for hours, even from up north, just to come here. And with the sheer volume of visitors who attend, we've seen no fighting, no vandalism, no shootings. Instead, we witness joy, excitement and community pride. So when I hear comments online suggesting the event should be canceled or moved away from Seaside to Marina, I am honestly perplexed. Why is it that people are always so quick to want to take away something from Seaside? We should be celebrating what we have here, not pushing it out. Seaside is fortunate to host seven car events. Not everyone in our community can afford tickets to Pebble Beach or Bayonet Black Horse. Those can cost hundreds of dollars. What makes Exotics special is it's accessible. It's free to attend or at most $30 a ticket, something families here can afford. This event isn't about cars. It's about giving our community, especially our youth, the opportunity to dream big. And I believe Seaside deserves to continue being the proud home of Exotics on Broadway. Because if Pebble Beach shows the world luxury, then Seaside shows the world possibility. And possibility is something we should never take away.
Peter Kay, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'd like to add to the prayer from the pastor. Let us pray. God and Jesus, we glorify you. Thank you for your sacrifice on the cross. Adding John 3:16, "For God so loved the world that he gave us his only begotten son, that whoever believes in him should not perish, but should have everlasting life." For God did not send his son into the world to condemn the world, but that he would, that the world through him might be saved. And also with Isaiah 61, "The Spirit of the Lord God was upon me, because the Lord has anointed me, Jesus, to preach good tidings to the poor. He has sent me to heal the brokenhearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives, to the opening of the prisons who, to those who are bound to proclaim the acceptable year of the Lord, the day of vengeance of our God, comfort all who mourn, to give them all beauty for ashes and the joy of oil for the morning." And also, Lord, please watch over the Planned Parenthood abortion clinic that pre-borns would be protected from there and they would follow the Hippocratic oath, the old version of doing no harm. And that it would be closed soon. And they, that they would not be doing these surgical abortions on the first and third Fridays, which would be tomorrow of the month. And it would be closed like those 31 other Planned Parenthood clinics have closed, including Santa Cruz and four other Northern California clinics, abortion mills. And thank you for the solid leadership we're getting from Washington DC. And we appreciate executive orders to, to stop de-banking where certain politically incorrect bank account holders like John Easton, a lawyer, lost their accounts from USA and also Bank of America. And hopefully we can stop this, the fraud of mail-in ballots. Recently, California sent out 22 million ballots and they could only account for about half of those, maybe 11 million. And we also want to have, of course, the, an audit on the Fed and closing down the Fed. And we want to balance the budget and pay off the national debt. And help the city council to follow the, the Bible and the original intent of the Constitution and do, do the Lord's will. Thank you so much. Peter Kaiser, Seaside. Bless you.
The caller ending in 9902, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Good afternoon. My name is Nina Beatty. I'm a former resident of Seaside. The Army plans to conduct a burn this year on the Bureau of Land Management land at Fort Ord in Area B, Unit A. An update was just published to the fordordcleanup.com website. Comments are due September 8th. I requested the city contact EPA and request that the burn is stopped because of the threat to public health and safety. The burn is conducted by the Army, the same agency that created this contaminated National Priorities List Superfund site at Fort Ord and misled the public and soldiers on the toxins used there and the extent of contamination. It has refused to acknowledge or provide aid to soldiers who were poisoned there by those toxins and to their survivors after the soldiers died from those exposures. And I've done this repeatedly at other Army bases. The investigation website MilitaryPoisons.org released a paper on the burn hazards and the dangerous toxins of the smoke from Fort Ord, including from munitions, herbicides, dioxin from Agent Orange, white phosphorus, even chemical weapons, as well as the toxins in the poison oak that will burn. Its debris falls out. People, including children, have gotten very sick from this toxic smoke. The smoke and ash gets inside homes, schools and falls out onto yards, playgrounds, Seaside, CSUMB, Marina, Salinas, Spreckles, Highway 68 and at least four schools. They have been impacted by past fires and the smoke. The cinders and embers are also a fire and injury risk. Burns kill wildlife, snakes, lizards, mice, insects, young birds and mammals and anything that can't flee. And they destroy habitat. Animals on fire have been seeing fleeing these past burns. And these burns have often gotten out of control. I ask that the city take action now to halt this burn and make sure there are no further burns at Fort Ord. This is much too dangerous for the public to be exposed to the repeated contamination and the health impacts from all these toxins. Fort Ord is a superfund site. That has not changed. And I am very alarmed that the toxins there, the military continues not to address what is still remaining on-site in the soil and is outgassing into the air. And I hope that the city will take action to stop the burns. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. At the last city council meeting, it was suggested that when members of the public raise concerns about potential litigation, they are simply assuming or don't know the law. It's our right and our duty as residents and taxpayers to advise this council of legal risks. When changes are made that could expose the city legally, it's not only appropriate, but it's necessary that the public call it out. And since it's our taxpayer money, my money and everyone else's money that would be used to pay for litigation, I will absolutely have something to say about it. You don't need to respond. And under the Brown Act, you shouldn't deliberate on non-agendized items. But undermining or dismissing public comment because you don't like what's being said is not only appropriate, it risks violating open meeting laws and eroding public trust. Just because the public is not in every closed-door sessions doesn't mean illegal activity isn't happening. It is documented and it is happening right here in Seaside by individuals in positions of power. To deny it is to ignore reality. For example, we saw it in how this council treated our boards and commissions, ordinance changes that stripped them of authority and independence, reducing them to no real power. That is not oversight. That is not good governance. That is concentrated control and it is dangerous. We also saw it in the deviation of funds from the Neighborhood Improvement Commission. That commission's funding was not created at this council's discretion. It was established directly by the voters through a bond measure. To modify and redirect that funding contradicts the will of the voters. To frame it as the community wanted this without ever putting it back on the ballot undermines the democratic process. And then we see another contradiction. Council members coming before commissions as independent residents, urging commissioners to rally around getting more staff for certain departments. But it was this very council that limited staff in the first place. You knew the consequences before making those decisions and now you come to commissions to clean it up? That's not collaboration, that is control. These are not assumptions, they are facts. Ignoring them doesn't make them go away. Continuing to ignore them is costly to taxpayers who may shoulder millions in litigation and to the city's credibility. And when residents see inequities under your leadership and are told to be quiet, it's questionable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Carter, Carter Randolph, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Hi, Carter Randolph. And I just wanted to share my perspective on the Exotics on Broadway event as part of Monterey Car Week. I've never attended a city council meeting before and so I'm quite nervous, but I felt compelled to, to come and speak about how much this event means to me. I first want to thank the city for hosting this event and I know a lot of people have concerns and they say it brings the wrong crowd or it's too many people or it feels chaotic. And I understand because there are a lot of people and any big event like that is gonna have some headaches or traffic. But here's what I see when I go. I see families spending time together, kids with their jaws on their floor, staring at cars that they've never seen in person and people taking pictures and talking to owners and getting inspired. It's people who love the art and engineering behind the machines. And I would hate for a select few rowdy individuals to reflect the sentiment of tens of thousands of people that respect Seaside and obey the laws. And I think that's important because not everyone can afford to get into Pebble Beach or the ticketed shows that are extremely expensive. This is the main event during Monterey Car Week that's free and it's open and accessible. And so it gives everyday people the chance to actually be a part of the magic. And I feel like the organizers are listening. They've expanded the space. They've added enclosed areas and VIP sections, even complimentary shuttles. So they're adapting and improving every year. And beyond cars, there's an economic ripple too. There's thousands of people that eat at seaside restaurants and shop in the shops and stay at local hotels. It's not perfect, but I have noticed the organizers that are making a real effort to listen. They're on Facebook in groups and in comments asking for feedback and engaging with people who had concerns. That shows that they care about getting it right. And that's the kind of responsiveness that makes me think that they can keep the event improving year after year. I'm passionate about this because as a car enthusiast, these kinds of events really do make an impact. Growing up, I'd see cars like this in magazines and maybe in video games, but I never thought I'd stand next to these cars in real life. And then you come to an event like Exotics on Broadway and suddenly it's right there in front of you. We get to hear the engine and talk to the owners and see all the details up close. And that's the kind of experience that sticks with you. And for me and so many others, it's more than just looking at expensive cars. It's about inspiration. It makes you feel like big goals are possible. It connects you with the community of people who share the same passion. That's why I care so much about this event and that's why I think it matters for Seaside to keep hosting it. At the end of the day, I feel like this is real positive for Seaside and the residents, positive for kids and families, and I believe that it's worth keeping long-term. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Linda Cunningham, member of the Seaside Homeless Committee, speaking as a private citizen. I didn't go to Exotics on Broadway, but I like it. It's, I'm old now, too many people, it's too loud. We had, we found parking the year we went. I also think the, the Le Mans is also grown. It, it needs more space, more cars, more, well, more parking, right? But I, I hope that that can be expanded in a way that's good for the city. Clearly there is a demand for something to happen in the evening. These people want to look at these exotic cars more. Bless you. I believe that there is a way. I've got my own ideas underway. I will bring a list when I got my act together on that. Just some ideas. There is a demand for something to happen after dark. It's not just all what I considered when I first got here, a bunch of old people who just wanted to look at old cars. It's changed. It's a different thing now. Oh, well, I'm remembering. I came here in 94. I have no memory of the military being at the base. It has been a ghost town the entire time I've lived here. I know a lot of people have a lot of history with the base. I just want people to remember, anyone under 30 has no memory of that base being anything but a ghost town. I'm not saying get rid of the history. I'm just saying we just have to remember. It's 2025. The base has been closed a long time. People don't remember it, don't remember all those people. It's just different now. I think the seaside horse, seahorse at the top of Broadway is very pretty. It looks very nice. I don't think I complimented the city when that arrived. It is very hard to read the word seaside because the base is dark gray and the lettering's dark blue. Can we paint it to look like a sand dune or an underwater ocean or a cloud or something so you can actually see the letters of seaside? Maybe I was tired, but I really was very hard to read seaside on that dark paint. I think this seahorse fountain here, it's just looking a little dated. The plants are tired. Take out the grass, get rid of the grass. Make it match the islands that are so pretty and Fremont. Go native, work with FOSPA, get low water, no water use, no mowing. Hey, there's grass that runs along the north side of the parking lot. Again, that's more water, more mowing. Let's go native. Let's show people that you can go low, no water use and it can still be beautiful. Butterfly Garden, it just would be really pretty and it would look, and the plants right in front of the seaside side, again, they're old and tired. Just take them out. Let it be grass. It needs, it needs a little spruce up. Oh, and when you're looking at the dome, it looks like there's, it's got like a little green tinge to it. I don't know if that's dangerous for the roof. I don't know if the roof needs hosed off, but we need to preserve the dome. And I just don't know anything about the lichen or whatever's growing up there if it's dangerous, but it also might look pretty if it was cleaned off and very pretty white. Maybe it could also have a mural on it. Thank you guys very much. And everybody did such a great job over the weekend. Thank you.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Thank you so much. Public comment is closed. Mr. City Manager, any issues? Questions or concern? You can answer me just on?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Just a few to comment on. First, the traffic issues on Monterey Road. Staff will take a look at Monterey Road. I saw our Public Works Director taking notes during that comment. The second piece is, you know, staff is currently collecting data, feedback from local businesses and identifying opportunities for continuous improvement for all of Car Week events, not just Exotics on Broadway. Staff will be presenting an after-action report to the city council on September 18th. Thank you.
Senator, did you have anything?
Yes, thank you. There was a commenter who suggested that the funding for the Neighborhood Improvement Commission came from a bond measure that is just simply incorrect. Those monies are city monies that are allocated on an annual basis.
I, I thought I heard that too, and that, that, you know, we're not calling people out, right? But the person said it was a known fact that that money came from a bond measure. Are you saying that's not correct?
I do not believe that to be correct.
Well, we, I know it's not correct. Me and, me and Mayor Potem was here when that money was pushed out by this council. So it wasn't, it didn't come from there. But residents can, you know, that's their tax dollars, so they can comment on, on what we do with it. But to state as a factual matter where these monies come from, I just think we had to be careful of that, especially if it's not a fact and it's easily demonstrated it's not a fact. And then someone also mentioned about some stuff going on in closed session and there was some violation of the Brown Act. And when people say that, as mayor, I get concerned and either it's gonna be true or I'm gonna push back because you're calling this council and those people violating it. You're suggesting criminal activity. And so that's just not gonna pass by me. So it was said that violations from closed session was going on. Do you know of any violations for closed session?
I think for that question, no.
And so I would say if there is any proof to that, you should come down to City Hall and talk to the city manager or talk to the city attorney. And then it could be straightened out. But as representatives of this city, the five of us, you know, I think we do a pretty good job of making sure we don't do that. And if a person does know what's going on in closed session besides the ones that are in there, I would like to know who's telling me that. I would like to know that. Okay, so thank you. And I, and I just want to go to the gentleman's point about Monterey Road. You know, our new city manager is here and I know he's working on that. And I know that's a concern of Monterey Road and exits. But that exit to Highway 1 is a Caltrans. That's controlled by the state. So to, to alleviate that traffic, we've been working for years how to add a lane to Monterey, but it still has to turn on to Caltrans on-ramp. And that's the issue. And so it's bigger than, than us. And so when you say what has the council done over 20, 25 years? It's trying to make sure Caltrans spend money on the peninsula to fix that, that on and off ramp. But that goes into their, to their on and off rent. So they have to say about that and, and the cost to, to fix that. But we will continue to look at that and try to abate it as much as possible. But it's not just up to us and it's not just about the money that Seaside has. It's, it's controlled by the state. And so I, I thank the gentleman for that. All right. Thank you so much. We go to item number six, which is public agency communications.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council and city staff. So yeah, first time I'm doing this, not in the public comment section, so it's kind of new to me. I'm here to share some updates from the Monterey Peninsula Airport District Board that I think will be interesting to you as well as your residents. Just to recap, the airport, we're building a replacement terminal for the existing terminal. And we're using a specific delivery model for that project. We're using a construction manager as contractor, CMAC. It's also known as construction manager at risk. The board selected Hensel Phelps as our terminal replacement project, CMAC. So as a function of this delivery model, Hensel Phelps solicits requests for proposal on specific bids of work. And then they'll make the selection and present to the board who the subcontractors are based on each of those specific scopes of work. There's certain requirements that the bidders have to meet. And Hensel Phelps selected the lowest bids on each of the scope of work. Bid Package 1 was previously approved by the board and included the following scopes of work. And I think the subcontractors that many of the tradespeople who live in the city will find helpful to be aware of. For the shoring and earthwork that we're gonna be doing at the terminal, that's Condon Johnson and Associates Incorporated. Condon Johnson is based out of Oakland. For the plumbing work, they selected FMB. That's Frank Mary Bravo out of South San Francisco. The structural steelwork is gonna be done by Gale. Gale is based out of Sacramento. The mass timber is coming from Timber Lab. That's one word, Timber Lab. They're based in Portland. The waterproofing is gonna be done by MTN and they're based in Roseville. Just yesterday, the board approved bid package two for the new terminal project. That's scope included the metal decking work. Metal decking is gonna be done by BT Mancini. They're based in San Jose. The electrical work is gonna be done by Royal. They're based out of Sacramento and they're a non-union shop. The mechanical work is gonna be done by Frank M. Booth based in Granite Bay. The baggage handling system will be Automatic Systems, which is at a Kansas City. The metal paneling will also be done by BT Mancini. The fire suppression will be done by Transbay out of Pleasanton. And the glazing is gonna be done by Royal Glass here out of Santa Clara. So bid package one and bid package two came out to $40,162,197 for bid package one and $38,132,589 for bid package two. We do anticipate two additional bid packages before we have our final guaranteed maximum price by the end of the year. The total for the project is gonna be roughly somewhere in the range of $100 million. All of the work that's gonna be done by our contractors and subcontractors will be paid at prevailing wage. So even though we do have some non-union subcontractors, they will be paying union rates for the job. And many of the contractors that were selected by Hensel Phelps, they do have relationships or agreements with local union halls. We have broken ground on the contract, on the project and it's scheduled to be completed sometime in late 2027. For more information, you can go to montereyairport.com/transform. That's the website, montereyairport.com/transform. Uh, you can reach out to me directly. My email address is j amadi@montereyairport.com or you can, uh, text me. My number is three one oh five hundred five one five eight. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have or direct them to our, uh, airport staff.
Thank you. Thank you so much for that report. And I think we do have questions. Councilmember Miller.
Thank you, uh, Director. Is the terminal that's there now, is that going to be torn down?
It's a great question. So at one point in the plans, there had been discussions about tearing down the existing terminal. That is no longer the case. That building will stay in place. That's where airport administration offices are. That's where Woody's is. Woody's is going to remain in place. There are discussions right now with US Customs to be able to accept international flights at our terminal and have processing for customs be in the old terminal building. Uh, but that's not finalized. That's in discuss, in discussion right now.
In the current terminal, I was there today, actually, uh, great experience, but in the terminal itself, there are advertisements and I believe maybe the city, some cities have advertisements in there. Is that correct?
Uh, you know, I'm actually not sure exactly who all is advertising in the airport.
Will there be advertising opportunities in the new terminal?
Yes, there will be.
There will be.
Yes. And if the city of seaside is interested, they should be reaching out to Chris Morello, the executive director of, uh, the airport.
Well, I'm just wondering if there's anywhere, anywhere we can show our rich history in the new terminal. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a wonderful evening.
You too. There's no other, uh, publications. We'll go to item A, seaside, uh, city news broadcast.
Let's step into this week's edition of Seaside City News, covering more of the events happening this August. Everyone's Harvest in partnership with Farms Together is offering free boxes of produce at the Seaside Farmers Market every Thursday. Please note that the extended market hours are now three PM to seven PM. So mark your calendars and we'll see you out at Laguna Grande Park on Thursdays. Get ready to celebrate. The seaside library is turning 50 and everyone's invited to the birthday party. Join us Saturday, September 6th at one PM for a fun-filled afternoon honoring five decades of books, learning and community. Come out and be part of the celebration because the golden anniversary only happens once in a lifetime. Join FOSPA on Saturday, August 23rd at Havana Solis Park and on the 30th at Mescal Neil Park for a day of service and outdoor fun. For more information, including future workdays and locations, visit friends of seaside parks.org. Experience the magic of El Piano de Mexico, Arturo Aquino, live in seaside. Join us Saturday, August 23rd from seven to nine at the Palenque Arts Center for an unforgettable night of music. Tickets are just thirty dollars and available now on Eventbrite. Don't miss this special night with one of Mexico's most captivating artists. The city of seaside is excited to announce two nominations in the weekly's best of Monterey County readers poll. The Old Meyer Center is nominated for best hangout for seniors, a welcoming space for connection, activities and community. And Blues in the Park is up for best venue for blues, bringing soul, rhythm and summertime energy to seaside every year. Show your seaside pride. Vote today at montereycountynow.com forward slash best of. Mark your calendars. Friday, August 29th from four to eight PM, Hot Cars and Cool Nights takes over Broadway Avenue in seaside. This month's theme spotlight's American muscle cars. There will be live music, raffles, awards and a stunning lineup of classics. Admission is free and show car entries are just ten dollars. Presented by Gold Coast Rods and co-sponsored by the city of seaside. Don't miss this summer tradition. Celebrate Labor Day in seaside with music under the sun. Monterey County Pops is marking its 40th anniversary with a free concert at seaside city hall. Join us Monday, September 1st with a pre-show at one PM and the orchestra performance at two. Bring your chairs, bring your friends and enjoy a holiday filled with music and community only in seaside. Mark your calendars for the 18th annual seaside artist tour happening Saturday and Sunday, September 6th and 7th from 11 AM to five. Explore the work of talented local artists at studios and homes across seaside. The Seaside Artists Association presents this free self-guided tour endorsed by the city of seaside. Don't miss this vibrant celebration of local creativity. We appreciate you tuning in to seaside city news where we work to include, innovate and inspire. We'll be back with more exciting events to share with you this September. Until then, be safe, live fully and enjoy all our city has to offer. Thank you seaside.
Wow, wow. We continue to have a lot of stuff going on in seaside. Lot of stuff cheese going, this is seaside. Next we'll go to item number, uh, seven, presentation seven A, uh, proclamation posthumously honoring US Army Staff Sergeant Robert Scott Johnson. I think we have some family members here. If there's any family members that may want to come down, then it'll be more than appropriate to come on down. Okay. Yeah, yeah. Come on, come on this way a little bit. So, so the cameras are facing that way. Come on a little bit. So can you hear me? What I, what I do first is I want to have a family introduce themselves. So people understand who I'm reading is two. So they understand, um, of course he's not here, but I want them to know who's standing in his stead.
Robert Johnson, Jr., uh, one of Robert's uncles.
Uh, Joe Johnson, uh, one of his alvos.
Tony Johnson, also one of his uncles. And we're also representing my, uh, brother Peter, who's his son, Robert's son. The whole family.
No, thank you. The city of seaside proclamation, uh, to Robert Scott Johnson, Staff Sergeant, United States Army, a fallen hero, uh, and in addition, uh, uh, us, us recognizing him tonight on city seaside is because the state of California has already recognized him and his heroism and his courage, and they honored him with the, uh, fallen soldier signs along the highway. And, and so that's what brings us here tonight. So Staff Sergeant, United States Army, fallen hero, highway memorial sign. Whereas Robert Scott Johnson was born on February 10th, uh, 1981 in Monterey, California to Peter Michael Johnson and Mayor Shamrock. And whereas Robert grew up on the Monterey Peninsula attending seaside high school and Ano, Ano Novo Extension High School from which he graduated. And whereas Robert was athletic, well-rounded, quiet and reserved, enjoyed dancing and music, chose his friends carefully, deeply respected and loved his family members and enjoyed exploring the Big Sur coast. And whereas prior to graduation, Robert enlisted into the United States Army as a way to further his education. He adapted quickly and excelled as a young soldier. He graduated from boot camp in July, nineteen ninety-nine and from advanced individual training as a chemical operations specialist. And whereas Robert served his country with honor and sought to protect the freedoms that his grandfather and uncles fought for during their tours of duty. And whereas upon re-enlistment, Robert was assigned to a new duty post in Iraq with the Alpha Company, First Battalion, Twenty-fourth Infantry Regiment, First Brigade, Twenty-Fifth Infantry Division. He shared with his family that he loved his country and through training was prepared to protect it and his family. And whereas on December 21st, two thousand twenty-four, Staff Sergeant Robert Scott Johnson met, I'm sorry, made the ultimate sacrifice during Operation Iraqi Freedom. And whereas, while Robert served our country, he thoughtfully kept in touch with family and friends and visited the Monterey Peninsula and the Big Sur coast. And whereas Robert always remembered the way home, his family and friends will forever keep his dreams and passion in their hearts as they travel this, for, travel his favorite roadways. Whereas for decades to come, when relatives, friends and travelers drive this section with the state highway memorial signs honoring Staff Sergeant Robert Scott Johnson and standing as guardians over seaside, the deep meaning of his service and sacrifice will be forever remembered. Now therefore be resolved that I, Ian Ogusby, Mayor of the city of seaside, on behalf of the city council, do hereby honor and remember Staff Sergeant Robert Scott Johnson for his senior service, unwavering courage and ultimate sacrifice in defense of our nation. Let this be a proclamation served as a lasting tribute to his memory and a symbol of our community internal gratitude. May the highway memorial sign stand not only as a marker, but as a solemn reminder to all who passed the coast. I'm sorry, all who pass on the cost of freedom and enduring legacy of a true hometown hero. Uh, this day signed Ian Ogusby, Mayor of the city of seaside. And like I shared with the family a, a while ago, as a, as a veteran myself and, and someone, uh, and I didn't share this earlier, someone that went into the, the army, uh, to further their education. Uh, it, it, it was heartfelt because, uh, me and, and me and Staff Sergeant Johnson shared the same MOS. So I know what he was going through, basic training, and I know what he went through, through, uh, advanced, uh, individual training. And so I just want to say on behalf of the residents of the city of seaside, uh, it's an honor for us to, uh, recognize the service and the sacrifice he made for this country. And so thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Ogusby, and thank you council members and staff. I have, um, a few brief prepared comments.
Okay. How's that?
I have a few brief comments and then I'll also, uh, pass the mic to my brothers who are also like to share a few words with you. Uh, we are a seaside family with roots dating back to the early nineteen sixties. During that time, seaside and Fort Ord were joined as a community through military service, schools, social gatherings and community initiatives. Robert was born here and like several of his relatives, my brothers and I and one more are veterans. He was a product of seaside with a commitment to service country. The state highway memorial sign placements will remind us of the way home for Robert and his love for our family and friends. They also represent a soldier who honored his oath to his country, his dedication to military service and sacrifice. And sacrifice, the sacrifice of tomorrows. It is sometimes said that we die twice. The first time when we take our last breath, the second time when our name is spoken for the last time. These signs will help for his name to be seen and heard and mentioned for decades to come. I intentionally ask that we forever remember our country's fallen heroes where they sacrificed all of their tomorrows so that we may have our freedoms. Thank you for keeping Robert's memory.
I defer to the oldest for it.
Mr. Mayor and, uh, city council members and the city of seaside, the Johnson family appreciates your proclamation presentation and remembering him. And it, it's hard because it just brings back memories right now as we had the state recognize Burton, then also when the city of seaside also brings it up. But Robert, I'm sure is grateful and his family, my brother, Peter and his wife, uh, appreciate what you're doing. He could not be here today. Um, my heart goes out to everyone that's ever served. You know what it's like to be in the service and to be alone and to take care of this great nation that we have. I thank you.
First of all, I want to thank God and I do appreciate the city of seaside and, uh, the history that we have here. Because if we hadn't come here, if we hadn't come here way back in nineteen sixty-four, maybe seem old to some of you young folks here. But I don't want Fort Ord to be forgotten. Too much history is there. If my dad never brought us here in the first place, I would have never met my beautiful wife that I met at seaside high. My graduate of seaside high, he's a graduate of seaside high, he is, and so is Robert and my wife. So it has a history here and we're thankful for the city recognizing Robert. But we know that he's not the only one that made the ultimate sacrifice in this city. Because I remember growing up, as we were, there was a few that lost their way through the Vietnam War. And, and I was just selling newspapers and I, I remember that when someone said, did you know his brother died? Until it comes to you, to your home. I appreciate it, but I'm thankful for seaside because when we got the message about Robert, they escorted, sent escort to pick up his body. It was a long time ago, but it just seems like yesterday. So we, we stand here on shoulders of those in the past. Fort Ord, if you're, you know, like the lady said, thirty, thirty-year-olds, you don't remember it. And I talk to them all the time. I have a grandson younger than that. They don't know it, but I teach them. That's what we do. Sometimes we forget. That's why we leave the youths behind. They, they don't, they don't care. They want to know our history. So let them know about seaside. And I don't mean to get up there and start preaching and get carried away, but I appreciate all seaside has done for our family. And the families there here, and they're doing a good job. But just another point. It wasn't too long ago when people looked down on seaside. Oh, you're from seaside. You live in seaside. You know, wow, you know, okay, we, we, we do, we, we struggling. There's nine of us, nine kids. Six of us boys in one bedroom, three in another girls, and then mom and dad. But we're not the only family that was doing that. There's a lot and there's some of them had more than us. But something about that love and that connection you, with people in seaside that you grew up with, that had your same struggles that you had. So I, again, I'd like to thank the council for all you're doing in seaside alone, especially to the mayor. I know his wife, Rita. I grew up with her, with the family. It's a small world. You can't do anything, like they said, you can't do anything here without somebody knowing you. They, you drop the name, oh, did you know? All you gotta do is go sideways a little bit and they go, oh yeah, don't, don't mess with them. Don't, you know. I, I appreciate it. And like I said, I didn't mean to get all emotional, but that's, that's just me and that's who I am. So thank you and God bless.
Thank you so much. We have these two right here, but we have two.
Yes, I thought the, the family would, uh, his mother's family. I'll make sure she gets it. Okay, thank you.
Okay, well, go to the next presentation.
Do we have a representative from Jacob's Heart present? She's here. Come on down.
Thank you so much. And, and before I start this presentation, I did want to say a few words, but uh the history, the, the remembrance, uh, the love. Uh, and just thinking about Fort Ord, that's not going anywhere, right? It's, it's a lot of young people that, that don't remember it being open, but it's a lot of older people remember it being alive and doing well. And so, you know, what we're trying to do as a council is grow it back to what it was, with something that was alive and vibrant, but you can never forget what it was. Because it wasn't just a place, it was people. And those people are still alive, they're still around the world. That's, that's what made Fort Ord famous is a million plus people being trained there. And that was just World War Two, right? So it was many more after that. So, so it's people around the world remembering coming to Fort Ord and the good times and the bad times. So Seaside, I would never forget what Fort Ord is because Fort Ord is Seaside, Seaside is Fort Ord. And uh you may hear me say the former Fort Ord, but that don't mean you don't know your history and you don't remember your history. All right. So I'm sorry about that. City of Seaside proclamation honoring Jacob's Heart's Children's Cancer Support Services and declaring September two thousand twenty-five as Children's Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Seaside. Whereas the character of our community is revealed in how we treat our most vulnerable. And whereas each year nineteen point two in every hundred thousand children in our community will be diagnosed with cancer. And whereas cancer remains the leading cause of death by disease among children more than asthma, diabetes, cystic fibro, right, uh, fibrosis, congenital amenities and AIDS combined. Whereas Jacob Hearts has been keeping medically fragile children and families housed, fed and emotionally supported by steadfast adhering to the following commitments. One, parents of children with cancer and other seriously illness will be relieved of financial fear and able to focus attention on their children. Two, no child undergoing intensive treatment in our community will be homeless. Wow. Right, wow. Families of seriously ill children will not experience food insecurity during and after a pandemic. And four, no child seriously ill in our community will ever miss a medical appointment because of lack of transportation. Whereas Jacob Hearts holds the memories and honors this legacy of hundreds of children from our local community who has been lost to cancer, ensuring that their memories will never be forgotten. And whereas the oncologist department, Lucille Packer Children's Hospital at Stanford has worked closely with Jacob's Heart for the past twenty-seven years as a trusted community partner and providing family-centered care that addresses the emotional, practical and financial struggles of families and children with cancer in the City of Seaside. And whereas it is important for all Seaside city residents to recognize the impact of pediatric cancer on families within our community and honor the children in our community whose lives have been cut short by cancer. Now therefore be proclaimed that I, Ian Ogusby, Mayor of the City of Seaside, on behalf of the city council do hereby declare September as Child Cancer Awareness Month in the City of Seaside and do hereby honor Jacob's Heart's Children's Cancer Support Services for outstanding support to our community, acknowledge the organization's contributions to Children's Cancer Awareness Month, honoring children with cancer in our community. Signed this day, Ian Ogusby.
Want to say a few words?
I have a couple of things right now. Um, on the, well, my name's Catherine Vakili, so on behalf of Jacob's Heart and the families that we serve, I want to thank the Seaside, Seaside community and the city council for recognizing childhood cancer awareness month. Every day, forty-seven children in the United States are diagnosed with cancer. Each, each diagnosis pieces places families on a path where the ending is unknown and it was never something that they planned for. These families need all the support that they can get. This proclamation shines a light on children in treatment, the survivors, and especially the children whose lives are tragically cut, cut short, which we will always hold bereaved families close in our hearts. By making this proclamation, Seaside is standing with families in their hardest moments and showing them that they, the community cares and that they are not alone. So thank you to everyone and for your leadership, compassion and for giving families strength and hope.
Thank you so much. Does the council want to say anything? I want to uh thank the city council for always supporting these type of endeavors and supporting these type of organizations and just reading about Jacob's Heart is just, what they do is so wonderful. Cause I think we all know and has experienced uh cancer in our families. Uh, and, and we know how hard it is when it's an adult. But when it's a child, I mean, what do you do? You know, and so if there's organizations like that that's actually out there helping families in this community, I just say we appreciate you so much and thank you. You're, you're changing lives. Thank you so much. Uh, we will go on next to the consent agenda. And we'll have eight A, approved minutes from August seventh, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting. B, approve a proclamation recognizing September as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. And I just did that, so I may be late for that. Uh, I had to look at that next time. Car for the horse. C, approve a fee waiver request from narcotics synonymous for the use of La Grana, Laguna Grande Hall for a woman's brunch on March twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-six in the amount of five hundred and six dollars and twenty-five cent. Uh, for those that were not here, uh, item D was removed from the uh agenda. Uh, item D was moved from the agenda. Item E, adopt a updated resolution authorizing investments in the State of California Local Agency Investment Fund and authorizing the persons who can transact business with the local agency investment fund. F, adopt a resolution approving a memorandum of agreement with Monterey One Water for the continuation of the Monterey Regional Storm Water Management Program. Eight G, adopt a resolution to transfer two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars from individual storm drain improvement projects to repair failed pipelines citywide. That concludes the reading of the consent agenda. Is there any item that someone from the council would like to pull off the consent agenda? Thank you. Is there any item the public would like to pull off the consent agenda? Hearing no one, seeing no one, uh, bringing it back to the council, what is the will of the council?
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Has been properly moved in second. I will open up public comment on the consent agenda.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Uh, thank you so much. I will uh, seeing no one, hearing no one, I will close public comment. As we've probably moved in second, uh, all those in favor is a red sign voter, which is aye.
Aye.
Ladies have the same right, extensions, hair nods, motion carry unanimously. Next we'll go to a public hearing, item number nine A, adopt a resolution approving the application to name the basketball court at Lincoln Cunningham Park after EJ Rollins and the placement of a commemorative plaque on a bench next to the basketball court in honor of Earl Rollins, uh, Mr. City Manager.
To the mayor, can I recuse myself from this agenda item? I, thank you.
But do you, uh, it'd be better for the record if you have it for a reason.
Yeah, I, I knew both of them very well and I worked with them and I, I didn't want I can, to be biased at all. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so much. Uh, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This item will be presented by Dan Melew, the assistant city manager.
Evening, honorable mayor, members of city council, city manager and staff. My name is Dan Melew and I'm the assistant city manager and tonight I'm representing the, to adopt a resolution on naming basketball court at Lincoln Cunningham. So a little bit of background, I'm in June, um, staff received a request to name the Lincoln Cunningham Basketball Court after EJ Rollins and place a plaque on a bench um after his father Earl. For um the policy of the recreation facility and street name um policy, public notice was posted on July first um to begin a thirty day comment period. Um, in addition to that policy, it also requires that the um application is reviewed by both the Art and History Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission. So the Parks and Recreation Commission um reviewed that application on July first, devoted unanimously to approve it. And then the Art and History Commission um heard the item on August twelfth and they approved the policy, they approved the recommendation with the consideration that the application meets the criteria of the policy and staff did um confirm that it did meet the, the criteria of the policy. Um, just a little note that it was supposed to go to the Art and History Commission in the beginning of July. They didn't have a quorum in that first meeting. Um, so we had to delay it a couple of weeks to make sure that they did have an opportunity to hear the application. So a little bit about the policy, um, it establishes uniform guidelines for naming and renaming uh a variety of public um properties, whether it be a facility, streets, um commemorative plaques, um and uh amenities within parks. Um, and it shows the names reflect Seaside's history, geographic, geographic and cultural diversity or significant contributions. Um, some of it, there's a variety of criterias for naming. Um, most of it is commemorative names, lasting contributions, civic service, historic events or community impact. Existing names generally retained unless compelling reasons for a change. One note is one of the criterias that honorees must be deceased for a minimum of three years except for extraordinary con- um contributions or national and international prominence. So a little note here that the um applicant um is still alive, but um it was deemed that he didn't meet those criterias based on those um requirements right there. So then there's a little flow chart on the right. Um, so the applicant, for the naming process, the application is submitted. Um, staff review it for completeness. It's then forwarded to Parks and Rec and Art and History within thirty days. And the, it's also in conjunction with a public notice, comment period for thirty days. And then it comes to a city council for final decision for approval, denial or to modify any of the recommendations. So who is EJ Rollins? Seaside native, professional basketball player with international recognition. He's a local philanthropist and a youth mentor and he's a strong advocate for community empowerment, leadership and youth development. And of note, uh, Mr. Rollins is in the International Basketball Hall of Fame. And how Mr. Rollins meets the criteria is significant contributions to youth development, youth development and leadership. He's a positive community impact and mentor, um, local and international recognition, ongoing engagement and seaside-based philanthropy and public support and community alignment. So he is one of the owners of Side Effects. And one of the unique programs that they do there is every year during the beginning of school, he does provide haircuts and a variety of other um amenities to kids to prepare them for um school and get them ready for the new school year. So the proposed naming, um, so we're looking at the amenity type is a basketball court for EJ. Um, location is at Nicky Cunningham Park and the commemorative intent is to honor his achievements and contributions. And then when we look at his father, um, Earl Rollins, the amenity is a bench at Lincoln Cunningham and the commend, and commemorative intent is to honor his service with the city. For those of you that don't know, Mr. Rollins was um a longtime Parks and Rec employee. In your packets, you will notice that there's a variety of letters of support from um community organizations with community testimonies and youth and family impact statements. So there, there, there's a lot of support for this request. So the summary is formally request the name, um, approval of naming the basketball court and place a commemorative uh plaque on the bench. The applicant is um willing to cover the installation as um it states in the policy and they're committed to honoring Seaside's heritage and values. So the recommendation is to remove the recommendations from the Parks and Recreation and Art and History Commissions to approve the application to name the basketball court um after EJ Rollins and place a commemorative plaque in honor of his father Earl. That I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that. Are there any, uh, any questions? Uh, council member Miller.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And yeah, this is so important uh that we honor our uh people that have contributed a lot to Seaside. What I'm wondering is because we have two uh with the same last name and uh a father, I was wondering if um the, if the staff thought of or other commissions thought of just making the whole area the Rollin, uh, the, the Rollin Court instead of breaking it out into two names. I, I'm, I'm not saying that's a good idea. I'm just saying, I'm wondering if the staff thought about making, instead of having a bench for one and the court for the other, just making the whole area after both of them.
Took in the application on what the request was, so we didn't want to make any changes because that wasn't what, how it came into us. Um, so this, I'm sure they, the applicant could be open to it, but we went basically on what the actual request was.
So this was their, kind of their desire, uh, or, or, and then we, and we followed up with our commissions and the commissions felt comfortable with, this is the plan that we want to go with. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, um. Did anyone else? Well, I, I'll talk about that later. Uh, let's take it, did you have anything else? Oh, no, I know, I'm sorry, I did have one question. You talked about providing haircuts, but is that free or is that for charge or?
It's my understanding he does it for your charge.
Yeah, just we need to make the record. So, okay, it wasn't clear. Uh, yeah, of course, our council member, um, Chris Harris over.
Thank you. Um, you threw philanthropy out there a lot. Um, but what does, what are the philanthropic contributions besides um haircuts? Or is, is there, is there more? Or is it, what were you trying to, to convey through that?
You know, he's a very humble gentleman from what I'm gathering and he doesn't like to um put a lot of that information out there. So I, from what I'm told is that he's very generous and he likes to be a silent, um, silent donor majority of the time. So we know about the haircuts and those things that he does on that aspect. Um, I'm sure if the applicant came down and gave public comment, she may be able to, rather than inside that way.
And, and, and there's no doubt that we're grateful for the contributions he's, this person, they've made, right? But I think it'd be beneficial to sort of expand on that. So the public can know as well.
And then uh I'll just add to that, um, like you said, the, the person may be humble, but, but you mentioned about a lot of uh letters from the community.
Correct.
Do, do we have a number on that or do we have?
I believe there's each in the packet.
Okay, I know we have the, you said the applicant is here?
The applicant is here.
Okay, so uh, do, we want to hear when I can. Okay, all right. Uh, if someone that represent, can represent the applicant, the person that put in the paperwork, whoever that may, yeah, could you, yes, ma'am.
The public first because I'm getting back to some people that are in other states.
Yep. Well, no, no, that's, that's fine. I mean, you're the applicant. No, no, I got, no, no, I got.
I'm sorry if I'm out of order.
Yes. Uh, but uh we will open up public comment and then uh the applicant always get time before or after, so they choose to go after, that'd be fine. Uh, So, the clerk will open up a public comment. And I think we have some people here. But maybe if there's people online, we can get them first. However, public comment is open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Gwen Nash, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
EJ helped our children while he was away. He's always sending money when they had to, had a project they had to take care of. And he was always coming around and letting them know what to do, how to play that basketball. He really could, he was real good at that. We know he went to St. Mary's in Oakland and he, I think he's back over there. But he's, he's a very good guy. And also his father. He, he was really a sound guy. And he wanted to help the children out and he did that too also. His father was also in that. And I'm really agree with this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Gina Mason, lifelong resident of the city of Seaside. I absolutely wholeheartedly support these two gentlemen receiving this recognition. I am a person who, his grandmother was a very famous restaurateur in Seaside. And she also sold wigs and so on and so forth. So, I grew up as a little child with my mother in her wig shop. So, also, the father was very instrumental in pouring countless hours into underserved community members and anyone who needed help as well as EJ. And as we had, the NAACP Youth Council had a 25-year youth summit in the city. And whenever we needed EJ to come and speak, he graciously poured into our kids in that way too. So, I just want to say that. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Dietra Edwards and my son and EJ both, my son is George Pincham and he owns Side Effects. And what they do, answer to your question, is every year they have a back-to-school program where they provide backpacks, haircuts to the kids in the community so they could go back to school feeling very positive about theirselves. They also go into Seaside High and they give haircuts to those kids that can't afford it. They go, they offer so much to the youth in the community, not just the haircuts, but they want them to feel proud and reflect and people that have jobs, they give them free haircuts so they can have, feel good about their stuff when they go for jobs and stuff. So, they give back to the community continuously through their haircuts and making people feel good and look good for theirselves. So, I don't know if that answers your question, but that kind of like, yeah.
Imari Skylark, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Hi, good evening. My name is Imari Skylark. I am a seaside native and I am currently attending Howard University. But as a former basketball player, I would just like to thank EJ and Big Earl for always ensuring I had the gear that I needed to play the game through my goddad. Q, congratulations on being considered for this honor. But thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Marian, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Yes, I would just like to say, EJ came from out of Greater Victory Temple Church of God in Christ. I remember him being in our youth department. He was a young man and he played the trumpet. Anything we asked EJ to do, he did. And all of the young children looked up to him. He was very calm. He was very unassuming and he was always very helpful. And I worked close with him because me and his mother went to school together. So, he is a great product out of Seaside. And I just believe that we should honor them that go out into the world, but they never forget where they came from. EJ never forgot. He came back, he blesses his friends, he tries to get people where they need to be. EJ does a wonderful job in this community. So, did his father. His father worked for the city of Seaside and he did the same thing. He's the one that showed him how to do it. That has been a wonderful family of upstanding character in this community. And I believe he is worth more than double the honor. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm going to try to be brief, but the two guys right there, one, two, the guy back standing back there. They're younger than me, but they were at Seaside. The whole little, EJ, Abby, Chris, I'm missing a name, help me. Orlando, so. I'm sorry, I am, okay, Blade Runners, just, he's a young African-American kid that came from here, went away, did good. A kid aspired to do what he did. Hall of Fame in the basketball league. I mean, it just says do it. I don't understand, having all this conversation. I know his mom is here, Big Earl, his dad. That was back in the time when, when really there was nothing going on, keep it real, but that's, I'm sorry. But, but, well, us getting in trouble. And there were certain individuals, his dad, that set the pathway for him to not get caught up. We got caught up a little bit, but we got caught out after we got caught up. It's time that we as a city, community, start to recognize our young African-American men for what they've done. So, the young ones can look at them and say, I could do it too. There's many individuals, Seaside High, I'm going to throw to a Monterey High too. It's time. What are we waiting for? This should not even be a question, shouldn't even be a discussion before the council. Side Effects, he's given me over a hundred and something backpacks during Christmas, Thanksgiving, and back to school. He's given me, what you call it, Christmas, what's happening with your Christmas, oh, Christmas gifts, Christmas gifts. He's even, back to school, he's giving me a check and backpacks, praise the Lord, because the kids needed them. So, again, I got a minute and something left. I'm not finished. Why are we talking about this? Why are we up here? We should be echoing saying, yes, yes, yes. His dad should be on the bench. Because when a kid sits on the bench, he's going to sit there and think about his dad. When he shoots the basketball hoop, he going to think about the son. And then it's a dad and a son. What if this son doesn't have a relationship with his dad, but he plays at the park where EJ is the hooper? And his daddy's the best sit-down. Then all of a sudden, I could have a relationship with my dad too. So, we got to look at this from the perspective of why we should be doing it. Simply because it should be done and he deserves it. 30 seconds. Thank you.
It's an honor to be in your presence, Mayor and Council. I want to start off by saying that I am a byproduct of Earl Roland. He is someone that planted in me and he's someone that watered. And he continuously poured into me even as I got older. And not only that, is his son is who, someone that I'm close with. They deserve this, not only because of what they're, they've done for the city and their contributions, but the impact that he has made on many lives, not only his father, but EJ as well. If we're talking about contributions, there's times where he has come into King Middle School, and I worked there, and talked to the kids. There's times at Seaside Middle already that he's come down and walked the hallways and took the time to talk to the kids. He's donated jerseys for me to take kids from Seaside that didn't play travel ball to be able to go out of town to play. He's donated apparel so kids have something to wear to be proud of. And they know that the name GUR is attached to Seaside, which is global now. So, students have and citizens have the ability to have pride in that. But for the most part, it's the legacy that Earl has left and EJ is leaving. He has his beautiful wife and mother who's here. It's always about four, no more. There's four of them, but guess what? They took me into their home and poured into me. Earl supported my mom when I needed a father figure, rides, checking on me when I'm walking down the street. Where are you going? What are you doing? How are you progressing in life? And I can stand here today as a byproduct of Seaside who left to come back, to pour back into my city. Because Earl taught me the importance of community and pouring back into the youth. And if I didn't have that, God knows where I would be. So, I'm blessed to stand here before, and I was here four years ago when you guys discussed about remodeling Lincoln Park. And by chance, I'm here again, hoping that there will be an honor and a legacy left for Earl Roland and little EJ Roland. So, that these youth in our city have something to be proud about and an opportunity to not only grow their game, but grow their social skills by interaction. And I hope to have things there that can honor them continuously, year after year. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Nairi Davis. I don't really have any notes prepared, so I'm just going to speak from my heart. I considered Big Earl Roland one of my best friends. I feel very weepy about it. But he was a mentor and coach and a second father to my son since he was four years old. And without sounding too dramatic, I don't know whether my son would be alive without Big Earl's influence. My son will be starting graduate school next week. I, thank you. I love you, Big Earl. I've known the Roland family for over 20 years. I have seen Big Earl motivate and discipline kids. As my son used to go to his training and camps regularly and speak to Big Earl almost every day. I saw Big Earl with discipline motivate children. And at the end of every session, hug each one and tell them that he loved them. He never denied a child because they couldn't pay for a session. EJ has carried that on. He's a professional. He's a gentleman. He's kind. He's a mentor. And he is also contributing economically to the city of Seaside. I love them both very much, along with their wife and mother, my beautiful friend, Glorieta. And I could go on and on, but I've seen Big Earl in action. I also confirmed with my husband that because of Big Earl, there is a donation. I believe it's made annually to the Boys and Girls Club in Seaside. My husband manages a charitable trust that belongs to my family. That was Big Earl's recommendation many years ago. My husband's ignoring me, but he said it was because of Big Earl. I believe it continues to this day annually. So, through others like my family, because of Big Earl and because of EJ carrying Big Earl's torch, there is still recognition, contributions, assistance being given to the Seaside, to the city of Seaside. And I want to mention that my dad served at Fort Ord also. So, thank you very much for giving me this time and giving me the opportunity to honor one of my best friends who I miss very much to this day. Thank you.
Are you coming out on a public comment?
I don't.
As the applicant, huh? Well, that's what I'm saying. You're going to get your own time.
I don't have a comment.
Okay, okay, all right. You're going to get one bite, so thank you, thank you, Larry.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members and staff. I'm Glorieta. I feel kind of conflicted being here because you know what I'm going to say. I just want to tell you that I am seaside native, seaside resident, a proud, proud native of Seaside. And I want to express my deep appreciation for this recognition, just for it even being presented. It's, it's amazing and it touches my heart. My son regrets, sends regrets. He can't be here. He had a last-minute obligation with his job. But he wants to tell you that he really, really appreciates this recognition. He's humbled and that his deepest desire is to carry on what his dad really instilled in him, is always giving back. So, I want to, once again, say thank you very much. I'm here to answer any questions. We appreciate everything, all the comments, my wonderful friends and family. And I always laugh because Earl would actually pull some of the kids off the street bus here in Seaside. And I tell him, don't be so hard. But anyway, that was his thing. EJ is a product of him and this is amazing. Thank you so very much. I had something else to say, but I've gone blank, but thank you.
Deja Robinson, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. As just mentioned, my name is Deja Robinson. And as a resident born on the former Fort Ord, we keep saying former Fort Ord, right in Silas B. Hayes Hospital and being raised in the city of Seaside, I'm a millennial who is honored to offer my support for the naming of the local basketball court in honor of EJ and his father to have the commemorative plaque. For the sake of time, I won't speak on the EJ. I remember as a kid spending countless times at the Boys and Girls Club. But what I will say is, then and now, he was always a talented and respectful leader, even in our younger years. When I think of EJ, I think of him as the quiet giant, someone who invests deeply into our community. He's always reaching back to support our youth. He's always carrying Seaside with him on his back, no matter where he plants his feet. He's not the kind of person looking for attention or recognition, which is why people are questioning why he deserves the legacy or the name of the park basketball court named after him. But he always gives back in ways that matter. And he's always supporting, whether it's back-to-school drives, mentoring the youth, supporting our local annual Juneteenth. Again, mentioned Side Effects with the local business, which we know helps to ensure money generating within our community as well as providing jobs. And when thinking about legacy, I feel like we think about leaving behind something long-lasting. But also things that help guide where we're going. EJ has left his mark here in Seaside, paving the way for others to follow. But to me, legacy means serving the past, present, and future of a city we can all continue to be proud of, a city that reflects the stories of those who come before us and those still writing history today. So, the young people, similar to my son, do not forget the history of what some of us have seen blossom before our eyes. We often lift up the stories of our elders and pioneers, which are very important, we know that. But we don't always recognize the younger generations in a long-lasting way who are also creating change. I think it's evident with everything that's been said so far and presented, why we feel that EJ is very deserving. And especially for those of us who have witnessed him make it as far as he has. Our children deserve to know the names of those from their very backyards, not only making great strides, but giving back in ways that they can benefit from till this very day. I feel that EJ is the kind of example our city deserves and we deserve to celebrate him and honor him in this way. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Daryl Choate, lifelong resident, just like anybody else up here. I don't know the history, believe it or not. Been here 62 years and don't know what Lincoln Park was named after. But it didn't sound like it was named after a resident. I do believe what Mr. Miller, I would name the entire park Roland Park. At least now we know what it means. I think as far as the two, I was honored to work with Earl. And I can tell you, back in the days when we had the Watts riots and all that stuff, Earl was very instrumental in Seaside. CPY, Earl was very instrumental in Seaside. He was our youth man. And believe me, He was our youth man. And believe me, back then, we needed somebody. And he was a big guy, and them kids listened to him. I've seen plenty of times that he made us proud because he was the big one and they liked him. As far as EJ, I'm just like all other fathers. I used to call him Little Picklehead because he was one of those damn good basketball players. And we would say, Picklehead, Picklehead. And they, they'll just laugh, okay, this is your take, but that boy was something. What he has contributed back to this community, I have witnessed, I have seen him do quite a bit for his young age. So that's why I say I don't think a bench and a court, I think the whole park should just be named Roland Park. Thank you.
Regina Richmond, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Good afternoon. My name is Regina Richmond. EJ, I've said a lot about EJ. EJ grew up in my church under the youth choir. He was a youth member in my youth department, and I watched him grow, become the great young man that he is. For the questions that EJ has given back, EJ has given so much back and finances. And he's not a young man to go around, you know, saying, I gave this, I gave that. But I can tell you personally that if any need in Redwood, any need in the youth department, he was there. You know, EJ could open up the side effects with his money anywhere in the country, but he chose to come back to the city of Seaside to give back to his city, which is what it's all about, giving back to his city. He chose to come here, not knowing if it was going to be successful, but because this is where his mother and father raised him. This is where his heart is, and this, he's a young man that everybody looks up to. When he comes back to the city of Seaside or Monterey or Salinas, all the young men, the young ladies, they just want to smile at him and talk to him. And he takes time out for everybody. To me, that is a person that deserves all the honor that's due to him. And his father was so great and gave all these free tournaments and did so much for the city of Seaside. Free. He's never had his hand out, always asked, do you need this? Do you need that? And I just think it's just so awesome and so great that this honor has been asked of him. And, and as his former youth leader in the church, I watched him grow to be a godly young man. And he's a young man that any, any parent would want their son to follow after. Thank you and God bless.
Thank you for your comments. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. I'm honored to call the Roland family my family. Through my father, Mr. Wash Stalworth and Mr. Roland, I was a product of the mentorship that was provided in the community. I stand strong in support of naming the entire park after the Roland family and placing a plaque in honor of Mr. Roland. Before Seaside was ever seen as a gem by newcomers, it was already home to families who built its foundation. For us, the courts, the parks, the schools were safe havens, gathering places, and training grounds for life. The court was not just a place to play basketball. It was where values were formed, where dreams began, and where Seaside kids learned to believe in themselves. That's where EJ Roland's story begins, on the blacktops of Seaside, surrounded by a community that shaped him. And together, his parents raised a son who not only succeeded on the international stage, but who never forgot where he came from. He returned to reinvest in the city, opening businesses, supporting nonprofits, mentoring athletes, and creating opportunities for youth both here and beyond. The Rollins' contributions go far beyond basketball. Mr. Roland worked for the years for the city of Seaside as an employee, the kind of quiet, essential labor that keeps a city alive. His mother served at the county office, helping families across Monterey County. These are the contributions that don't make headlines, but form the backbone of a community. And EJ's impact continues today. He has financially supported many AAU teams across the peninsula, ensuring young athletes have access to opportunities. Through, through his clothing line, GUR, he's provided uniforms for children. He has helped distribute free school supplies to local students. These actions show that the Roland family's commitment is not symbolic, it's tangible, it's ongoing, and it's deeply rooted in Seaside. So when I hear stipulations or objections raised against his honor, I can't help but see as another, see it as another barrier Seaside sometimes puts against its own people. They reflect a lack of knowledge about this city's history, or maybe they reflect the perspective of those who came here later without understanding the sacrifices of families like the Rollins. You cannot dismiss the people who built this community with their work, their sweat, and their belief in a city that many once turned their backs on. The truth is simple. You cannot erase Seaside's foundation. You cannot overlook the people who were here long before others began to claim this city as a jewel. And let me leave you with this. EJ Roland has always lived by a simple but powerful motto, attack life in full pursuit of your dreams. That is what this family has done for Seaside, and that is what this court should represent for every child who steps on it. I urge you to support and approve this resolution without hesitation. This is not just about a name on a basketball court. It's about honoring Seaside's past, celebrating its present, and inspiring its future.
Thank you for your comments. Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
I'm getting a text that Michael Garnett with a handbrake.
Public comment remains open, so.
Michael, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Hi, how you doing? My name is Michael Garnett. I'm from Seaside. I'm attending TSU right now. I'm scheduled to graduate in December of 2025. I'd like to recognize EJ and his dad for the things they did for the city and community, especially the back to school events, and for his father for giving me advice on how to move away from home since EJ has moved away, since he's played overseas and stuff like that. And all the gear they gave us too. And it would be a great honor to just recognize them and the things they've done for the city. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Will, you now have the floor to make a public comment.
Yes, hello. Can everybody hear me clearly?
Yes, we can.
I'd just like to speak on EJ and Earl Roland's behalf. I first met Earl himself at the Boys and Girls Club when I was 13 years of age. He was one of my first ever real coaches in the game of basketball. He has totally sit around there and have changed my life. Some of the techniques, some of the skills, the training, it's stuff that I work on with my son today as him being 10 years old. EJ, my little brother, somebody who I always looked up to, respected, has always been there for me. Me and him still talk. I've watched him grow into being more than just a Hall of Fame basketball player. Husband, just an amazing person. How he gives back. EJ is a true symbolism to me of what Seaside is about. Resilience, fighting, never giving up, leaving a legacy behind, and things that's totally going to surpass him. Having this court is just a small token of what everything that Earl and EJ have honestly done. I have been nothing but blessed by meeting them and having them in my life. Earl was like a second father to me. He's been nothing but a blessing. I miss him. EJ, oh my goodness, like this, this is big. It's very well deserving. Everybody from Seaside who knows the Roland family knows that this right here is something that has to be done. I hope it's done. It needs to be done. And honestly, there shouldn't be no questions about this. This is a slam dunk. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Charlisse, you now have the floor to make your public comment. That caller is no longer appearing on the Zoom.
Public comment remains open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Thank you so much. Public comment is closed. We did reserve time for the applicant. The applicant has time to speak.
Mr. Mayor, members of the, of the council, thank you. Are there, before I start, are there any questions that I may answer as the applicant?
No, I don't think we have any questions.
Okay, so I think enough has been said in lieu of time, enough has been said. And Dominique, you said that that was Charlisse. I'm glad that she called in because I'm Charlisse's mother. So, and so I'll just end with Big Earl coached Charlisse. And one funny story, Charlisse came home with a D, and I said that she wasn't playing basketball anymore. And I said, I don't care what you say. And so Big Earl went over my head and went to Mr. Mitchell. And he said, how much do you need her on the team? And he said, just like the Lakers needed Magic, so talk to your wife. So, but one thing I want to say about EJ that wasn't said that.
Can I ask you a quick?
Oh, no, I'm being right there, Mr. Mayor.
No, I'm saying, I want to ask you a question. So does she play?
Yeah, she played. Yeah, Mr. Trump, Mr. Trump misses. Yeah, so she played. And so, yeah, she played. But one of the things that stand out about EJ, not only EJ, there's Orlando. So you will be hearing that name. There's Bouye. You will be hearing that name. There's, you know, George, Mr. Pincham, you will be hearing that name in the future, those young men. But we're here tonight about EJ. There are countless times that I calls, call him about a need of somebody in the community that needs something. And a bag is delivered to them with what they need to get to where they're going. So that's what you call philanthropy at its best. And the thing that I like about this young man, first of all, because we all know where I work at. I work within the prison system. First of all, that he wearing a basketball suit and not an inmate suit. That's the first thing. And then another thing is that he's a young man that's pouring a lot into his community, where he could be, he poured that into his family, but he continued to pour it into his community. And those young men on that, at that side effects corner, they continue, they continue, they continue, they continue, they continue. So I'm just gonna, the people have spoken. I'm gonna end it right there. And I'm just gonna say to you, congratulations to you as you consider this request from the citizens of Seaside.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
Did anyone else have any questions? You want to go now? Or you want during the vote? Possible. Oh, can I press stop? Okay, someone, someone said earlier about, you know, trying to change the name to, to something else and try to talk about changing the name of the court or the number, the name of the park. What we don't want to do is go backwards, right? So, so we're talking about this tonight. Is that correct? You're not, you're not advocating that, are you?
No, if, 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 if I knew I could change the name of the park, I would have still up here to change the name of the park. I'm not standing up here to change the name of Lincoln Cunningham Park. I'm standing up here to name the basketball court and the benches after EJ and Earl.
Right, I just want, you know, after we make sure you, you know, we are clear with you and what you're advocating for.
What does the process is.
Because.
It's an honor that the citizens would feel that.
Yeah, no, it is, but that's why it's called Cunningham after the second mayor of the city of Seaside. Right? And so we're, we're, we just had a full conversation about not forgetting your history. And so we don't want to do that, especially for a mayor, right? We ain't doing that, right? But, but my point is, you know, you're here for a specific reason.
Yes.
We should stay focused on that. And my question to you is, I had the pleasure of knowing Mr. Roland, right? And I met him as Big Earl, and then I'm listening to all of this about Big Earl, but that's not what that says up there. So once we pass this tonight, the bench will say Earl Roland, or should it say Earl, Big Earl Roland? So people understand who that is. But that's something that, that's something we can't make up. That's something you have to.
That's in this one. And Mr. Mayor, a few, a few in the members of the city council and Parks and Rec need, allow me to just have that conversation with his family. Because after all, it's their legacy.
Well, well, that, well, that's my point.
Yes.
That's my point.
I receive it.
Yeah, we all fell into Big Earl.
Yes.
And then that says a lot.
Yes.
As opposed to just Earl Roland, right? And so that may be something you want to think about.
Yes, I agree.
Council, I think if the council allows that to be decided, that little technicality about the naming, that may be a good thing to think about.
Thank you for that.
Okay. Then. Okay, that's, that's all I had. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And then we'll bring it back to the council for comments and or questions. Councilmember Garcia is on.
Thank you. It's just a comment, so you could sit down.
Thank you.
And I think all that spoke today because when, when I heard the presentation and it was just mentioned as philanthropy, when reading these letters, I really wanted the presentation to highlight what was actually done by EJ. And I'm glad that you mentioned the example of the jerseys. That's one of the examples that I was going to cite when reading these letters of recommendation, which came from King Middle School. King, King, no, not King Middle School anymore, Martin Luther King Junior School of the Arts. And one of the lines that it says that EJ donated over jerseys to two, over 200 students for sports programs. And I thought that was something that I would have liked to see in the presentation really highlight. I, I think bottom line here is never sell short someone's accomplishments and contributions that they've done to our community. And I think this was a prime example of what we could have highlighted in that presentation to showcase to our constituents and the public as well. So, but I thank the public for coming out here and highlighting this and much more. So our community can, can really understand and really celebrate the contributions in which our community members have done over these years. So that was my only comment that I wanted to, and hence why I asked about what more philanthropic contributions they have made.
Thank you. I'm gonna come back to that, pick up that thread in a second. Councilmember Mel.
Thank you. My question is for Mr. Muwes. Thank you, Mr. Muwes. Mr. Mayor. And hearing the sentiment of our community today, I'm pretty convinced that we need to have a ceremony when this is completed. Has the city considered that?
It was something we will take into account after the process plays out tonight.
Okay, because we want to allow for enough time for family to make arrangements and for a big celebration at the park if this is passed tonight.
Yeah.
And without.
Yeah, no, I don't, no, go ahead, finish.
Without a ready to make a motion.
Okay, hold on a second if you could.
No problem.
Yeah, we're not talking about a celebration right now because that's not on the agenda, right? So we're not agreeing to do anything, right? But if that's what's brought forward, then, then the council would, to the city manager, I'm sure the council would support that. I'll, I'll go on the question. Sorry, what's the will of the council?
I think, Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the naming, renaming of the basketball court at Lincoln Cunningham, the EJ Roland Court in honor of EJ Roland, and that we place a commemorative plaque in the name of the applicant working with the city, whether it's Earl Roland or Big Earl Roland, or however the applicant sees fit. Thank you.
I second.
I was probably moved to second. Thank you so much. One question. I took out, I think a few, about 30 seconds worth of comments. No, I appreciate you asking for more. a few, about 30 seconds worth of comments. No, I appreciate you asking for more information because it's our responsibility to make the record, right? And someone talked about earlier, why are we here? Why are we going through this process? This is how you get it done, right? This ain't no backroom. This ain't no, this is here in the public. And so when, when the public goes by there and they see that name and that bench said, the bench, they know the citizens through their council did it that way. It just didn't pop up. So it was not a question of not supporting or not respecting. It's at a certain point, we have to make the record on why we do what we do. And like I try to say all the time is put that information in the history books, in archives. All those wonderful things that were said about Mr. EJ and Mr. Roland, a big Earl, you know, EJ is young and here, he's going to continue to add to his legacy, right? But Big Earl's is set. And so it's good that people said what they said on the record today about him. Because there's a lot of things that I didn't, I never heard about him. I know he's a good person. But the things that you guys said today adds to that. And that is always in the minutes and that will always be documented electronically. So I appreciate that you asked for more background information. And, and sometimes, you know, going forward, even when someone is humble, we still need to, we need to call their accolades. Even if they don't want their flowers, the flowers will be delivered, if that makes sense. So I would, I think it's probably moved to second. I will call all those in favor using the red sign voting, which is aye. Nays have the same right, abstentions, hair nods, ayes have it motioned carry unanimously. All right. Now, we'll give the mayor, for Tim, a second to come in and we'll go to item number B. All right. No, we'll, we'll try to get B done before 7:30. Take a break, 7:30. That's okay with the city clerk. Okay, we'll go to 9B, adopt the ordinance to amend Seaside Municipal Code, adding chapter 9.05 prohibiting aggressive solicitation in the city streets, medians, and other places, and amending chapter 9.20 overnight occupancy of vehicles on public property, 9.21 storage of personal property on city property, and 10.32 stopping, standing, parking. The proposed ordinance amendment is not subject to the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to section 15061b 3 of the SEAC guidelines. For the public, this is the second reading of this ordinance. And it has been talked about before, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Again, I'm gonna call on Dan Mewes, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening again, Mayor, members of City Council, city manager and staff, Dan Mewes, Assistant City Manager. And we're here for the second reading to amend these multiple chapters of our city code. So with a background and why it matters to Seaside, we were looking at promoting public health and safety, ensure accessible and safe public spaces for all residents, protect constitutional rights, respond to community concerns regarding unsafe and aggressive solicitation, accumulation of personal property, and overnight vehicle occupancy. So the new chapter, 9.05 for aggressive solicitation prohibits unsafe aggressive solicitation in key public spaces. This identifies some of the locations for medians, traffic lanes, financial institutions, driveways, and after dark. And it protects free speech rights with time, place, and manner restrictions. It supports pedestrian traffic and commercial safety. And then we added the definitions for aggressive, which is defined in section 9.05.020. We revised chapter 9.20 for overnight vehicle occupancy, prohibits, prohibits occupancy in vehicles on public property between the hours of 9:00 PM and 6:00 AM. In the current ordinance, it states it's 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. So we're backing it up an hour. This aligns with state and legal standards as well as our neighboring communities. And we're also revising chapter 9.21, which adds some key definitions, which identifies attended versus abandoned property. It outlines what is considered accessible unlawful storage. And then it also highlights the essential items for survival and that are protected unless deemed unsafe. When we revise chapter 9.21, storage enforcement prohibits the storage that blocks ADA access or entrances to variety of businesses and doorways and entryways, enables cleanup of public property with 72-hour notices. Personal property may be disposed of after 60 days, and outlines notice, impoundment, and disposal procedures. It also highlights the health and safety risks can trigger immediate removal of these items within, before those 60 days. We are also revising chapter 10.32, parking, the underparking amendments. So it removes the fixed four-hour limits at three of our parks, Catino, Laguna Grande, and Roberts Lake. And the new regulations will allow for the city manager to set the posted signage for any of our city facilities. So the recommendation is to adopt the ordinance and amend Seaside Municipal Code, adding chapter 9.05 prohibiting aggressive solicitation in cities, streets, medians, and other places, and amending chapters 9.20 overnight occupancy of vehicles on public property, 9.21 storage of personal property on city property, and 10.32 stopping, standing, and parking. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you for that fine report. Are there any questions from the council? Council member Miller.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mewes. I got a comment today that if somebody, this gentleman gave me a hypothetical, and the hypothetical was that if he goes and gets a cheeseburger and sits in his car and eats a cheeseburger after nine o'clock, is he violating any city code?
Depends on where he would be parked.
So if somebody's not spending the night or overnight in a car, they're just in the car for 20 minutes, maybe this question goes to the city attorney. But if they're in for a short period of time, are they violating this code?
I'll defer to the city attorney.
Through the mayor. Thank you for that question. As I understand your question, if somebody is eating a cheeseburger after 9:00 PM in one of our parks or other areas that this ordinance applies to, is there a violation? And the answer to that would be yes, because there's no standing, stopping, or parking after the time specified. That is our current law. The only difference here is instead of at 10:00 PM, it's we're moving it one hour earlier to 9:00 PM to make it consistent with our internally, internally consistent with our, our other code sections.
Thank you for that. And just so I understand correctly, the code that we have in our current city code is the same code that we had before that we'd have tonight. The only difference is, is that we are moving it up one hour from 10:00 to 9:00. Is that correct?
Correct.
And in regards of the aggressive, we've defined aggressive in a way that makes sense?
Yes.
And another part of this code does not allow people to stay in our, in our medians?
That's correct.
And we don't currently have a code for that?
That is correct.
That's all my questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Anyone else? I, I got a question because I was a little confused. So, so the hypothetical was if somebody went and got a hamburger and it was eaten in their car, would they be violating the, the code? The eating the hamburger is not the violation, is being in the park when the park is closed.
That's correct.
Okay, that's, I just want to be clear. I thought it was a good question, but I was, your answer kind of threw me off. It's not about what, what, you know, I would say it's not about what you're doing because you could be doing something positive or something negative. But if the park is closed, then you shouldn't be in the park. Does that, does that...
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right. I'm just, I want to make sure I'm, I don't understand what's going on. Thank you so much. We'll take it out to public comment.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Tim Heven, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Oglesby, City Council. My name is Tim Heaven. I come to you for you today as a humanitarian with this experience of being unhoused. I'm the chair of the Live Experience Advisory Directive. I serve on the Continuum of Care Leadership Council, co-chair of the monitoring evaluation committee. I sit on the California State Policy Advisory Committee with corporate support of housing. I'm a member of the Bring California Home Committee, and I also serve on the Board of Directors with the Coalition of Homeless Service providers. I'm artist and DJ on KHCC 90.9 FM. I share this not to boast, but so that you understand, I speak with both lived experience and personal knowledge. And I stand here as a voice for the voiceless. So I rise tonight to state clearly and without hesitation, I oppose any revisions to this that's happening. I think altogether, it just really needs to be repealed. Just to be clear, it's not just about parks. These ordinance apply to public areas as well. And that means sidewalks, parking lots, streets, the very places people have no choice but to exist when they cannot afford a roof. The only difference in this revision is that instead of making it illegal to arrest in a public area at 10, now becomes nine. This is not progress, this is regression. It's not a solution, it is an even harsher punishment. The ordinance should not be revised, it should be repealed altogether because of, at its core, it criminalizes poverty. It stigmatizes and stereotypes people forced to sleep in vehicles around public land as dangerous, as threats to public safety. But that logic is absurd. It's simply sleeping, if somebody's sleeping makes a person dangerous, then by that standard, everyone sleeping in their own homes would also be a public threat. Should we arrest people in their beds for closing their eyes? Of course not. So what, what, what these chapters really do is wage war on the core. They direct our police to confiscate people's belongings, their IDs, their medicine, their photographs, throw them away, arrest them, jail them, and release them with nothing. That's not leadership, that's cruelty dressed up as law. And Seaside knows better. During COVID, on Colonel Durham, the city opened a safe sleeping site. I lived there. It was stable, calm, and clean. There was one rule, no violence, and it worked. But when COVID ended, that site was closed, not because it failed, but because of an urgent need for development. And nearly five years later, the lot still sits empty, empty ground where compassion once stood. Meanwhile, the cost of rent in Seaside and across California has become simply outrageous. Never in history has there been such a disproportion between what people earn and what they must pay in rent. I have led homeless outreach in this county for the past three years. I built relationships with mostly unhoused community, and I could tell you this, not once have I met someone that does not want housing. Everyone wants stability, dignity, and safety. Housing is a human right, and until we treat it as such, it is unjust to punish people for surviving without one. These ordinances don't just harm the unhoused, they harm the entire community. They waste taxpayer money on sweeps, police hours, and jail cells when decades of evidence shows they do not work. So I ask you, will Seaside be a city of leadership, or will it follow the failed inhumane path being passed down from Washington? Will you repeal these ordinance? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. I'm speaking today in opposition to the ordinance amendments. This proposal may appear to improve safety and cleanliness, but in reality, it targets and criminalizes the daily survival of our unhoused neighbors. Once the city makes it illegal, it will be illegal punishing people for existing in public spaces. That is not safety, that is discrimination against who, those that cannot, against who can and cannot use our parks and sidewalks. We cannot ignore the 2024 U.S. Supreme Court reversal on homeless protections. That decision already weakened the constitutional guardrails for our unhoused individuals. And now city like, cities like ours are rushing to fill in the gaps with laws that push people further into crises. At the same time, California law is shifting to strengthen protections for unhoused residents, recognizing the criminalization is not a solution. These amendments walk a very fine legal line, risking costly litigation while placing vulnerable people at even greater risk. Meanwhile, state leaders are moving in a different direction. Labeling tents, clothing, medication, or documents as trash is dehumanizing. Seizing them without due process is not only legally questionable, but morally indefensible. Let's call it what it is, the doctorship of property, a modern play out of the 13th Amendment's loophole punishing poverty itself. Equity means recognizing that people didn't choose to be homeless. They are responding to trauma, disability, systemic failure. These ordinance treat homelessness as a crime instead of a public health emergency. Just because something is partially legal doesn't make it right. If we lead with compassion, we would invest in outreach, shelter expansion, volunteer storage, hygiene access, and supportive services, solutions that actually work. So I ask you, where are people supposed to go? Where should they store their belongings? Until those questions are answered with dignity, these amendments will only deepen inequities, invite litigation, and compromise our values. I urge you to table or significantly revise this ordinance and align with California's more human path forward. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments.
Earl Showtai, Seaside resident. I stand in support of this ordinance. And why? Because every city seems to have a, when it's something like this. But guess what every city's doing? Loading them up into their cars and dropping them on our doorway. This is just a tool. I do trust the police department will be very curious and mindful and hopefully just be able to speak to someone that is doing wrong. Because I believe he, on the corner of Del Monte and Fremont, every day I go by that. That's my way home. And I asked that guy, look, man, I can't give you no money as long as you keep throwing all your trash on that ground. Now, you know, some of them just does not respect any type of law. And that, it has nothing to do with them being homeless. It has nothing, them just being who they are. They just don't care. So we got to have a tool in the books. I think this is a great tool. I think we need to use it.
The caller ending in 4436, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Okay, good evening, Seaside. This is Elise Shim. I don't live in Seaside anymore, but I used to. And I had to live in a hotel in Seaside when I lived there. I also lived in a airstream. And all that time, I had to have a storage, I had to pay for a storage facility. Now, in Salinas, they have greatly expanded near Chinatown, the storage facility. There's like millions of, of storage units there. So people who are homeless, they can put their stuff in a storage unit. They don't have to put it in, in public spaces. So I, you know, I do support this ordinance for Seaside because otherwise you're going to have homeless drug addicts on fentanyl like they have in San Francisco, like they have in Los Angeles, with their dogs, and all of that coming onto the property of private citizens. And it is, and that's, that is a health issue. It's a very bad health issue. Plus, it's a safety issue to have people like that. And I mean, I'm not looking down my nose on people who are homeless. I've been homeless myself. But... But, you know, you have to use your head and maneuver your homelessness so that you're not, um, stepping on the toes of, of, uh, the community and, and making the community, um, a health scape. So I think, uh, Seaside has to go along with what all the other California cities are going along with and in Washington DC and every place else to get, um, the people off the street. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Peter Kaiser, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank, with this, uh, proposed ordinance, I think we need to make sure that we respect the First Amendment of the U.S. Constitution um, on freedom of speech and assembly. We need to respect the, the right of people to peacefully assemble, for instance, in front, on the sidewalk and pray and sing and peacefully, uh, uh, be there and, um, against the abortion mill there. And we also need to respect the right of citizens to, um, pass voter guides out peacefully, uh, along city streets and voter guides and, uh, uh, campaign for appropriate, uh, candidates who follow the Constitution. So we need to make sure that these, uh, these rights are protected in any kind of, um, proposal that's being done here. Thank you so much. Bless you.
Thank you for your comments. Elaine, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Oh, hi. Uh, I live over on Kimball, near the condos. And I had to cross, um, to get down to Hillby and Schaefer to catch the bus in the morning. Is there any way that the city people can put like a stop sign or a school crossing or speed bumps? Like on Kimball because people drive like they're nuts. And I'd rather get to work all in one piece without getting hit by someone driving like they're crazy. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Wes White, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Wes White, Slough County Homeless Union, uh, also a member of the Lead Committee, which is part of the Continuing of Care for Monterey and San Benito Counties. Uh, checking in because, uh, the ordinance is certainly regressive. Uh, it is certainly going to put a lot more people in harm's way. If you say all the community, you mean everyone who can afford to pay rent. And if you cannot afford to pay rent, then what's going to happen to you is we're going to take everything you have on a daily basis every time we see you. So keep going. And that, that whole attitude is, I mean, they're not homeless. They have a home, they have a home until you take it from them. They are addressless. What they need is like 400 square feet in a structure, uh, that'd be 20 feet by 20 feet somewhere, anywhere. Public property, private property, it don't matter. It can be lined up, it's just a matter of respect. It's almost like you've shunned these permanent lepers from the church. And, uh, they haven't really done anything to really sin against you. Yet here they are to be nomads indefinitely. Monterey County, or I mean Monterey City just passed ordinance to, uh, haul away most people's vehicles and keep moving people along. Well, of course, they're coming to you. You're not trying to stop Monterey City from driving their problem to be your problem, which actually Monterey County has an encampment resolution policy that, that encourages jurisdictions not to do that. And what you're doing is the same thing, you're going to push your problem onto other jurisdictions. More likely the state and county jurisdictions because they're the most easiest process of elimination to go. From what I noticed earlier in the year, uh, folks would have to leave Seaside during the day and stay in San City until the night, which they weren't allowed to be there at night, so they better get back to Seaside. So these sundown laws are, are still happening on a daily basis. And we haven't really far removed ourselves from any kind of open discrimination as of yet. Uh, if, if you ain't got no money, that's the way we're going to discriminate against you. And we're looking to grab people as much money as we can because gentrification is our business. Public service is meant for private gain. And that's the, that's been shown through this ordinance and how you've been doing business. You're gonna align yourself with Newton and, and the, uh, Supreme Court that says, oh, we're not responsible for you. We, we don't need to provide you housing, you just need to get out. And by the way, we're taking everything you got, and we're going to call you the criminal for the rest of your life. If you ain't going to give us money by way of rent, then we're going to make money off you by criminalizing people. We need to stop the sweeps, you need to give people an address. That's a real problem. Uh, it seems like the problem is more important to you than the actual solutions.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, at this time, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Uh, thank you so much. Public comment is closed. Bringing it back to the dais, what is the will of the council?
I just have one amendment, if that's okay.
Uh, yeah, of course.
Uh, I was going to report at the councilman reports, but today I spent, uh, we all serve on subcommittees throughout regionally. And today I spent two hours with CHS, which is Community Human Services. And this is all we talk about, is helping people that are less fortunate and helping people get back on their feet. And this city does a lot. This city has multiple shelters. We have on Elm, we have a shelter on, no, Chabina, we have a shelter. This city steps up to the plate when it comes to this issue. Uh, and we put our money where our mouth is, and we, uh, are doing more than other cities. That was all my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, thank you. Uh, what is the will of the council?
I motion to approve item nine B.
Second. It's been properly moved to second. Are there any questions or, uh, yeah, on the question, any comments? Uh, I'd, I'd, I'd be quick if there's not, you have any? I'd be quick. Uh, I want to thank, uh, Councilman Miller for, for laying it out. We do a lot in the city of Seaside. We do a lot. Uh, you know, uh, could we do more? I gue- I guess we could, right? But it's, it's a balance of that with the resources and what we do as relates to the other responsibilities that we have. But we have a handful of shelters. Uh, we have, uh, city staff dedicated, you know, at least 60% of their time to help homeless people find resources. Our, uh, family and, and community, uh, uh, service team, that's really what they do if they're not in a crisis. Uh, you know, that's a lot of time spent with that, uh, case management. Um, and that's out of our, our general fund. You know, the resources for, uh, people, uh, without an address, and I think, uh, uh, Mr. White made some good points. People without an address, uh, the, the money that's for that stops at the county and here, the tri-county area. And then it comes back down through, uh, nonprofits that say they serve, uh, people that don't have addresses. But this is not to, uh, hurt or punish. Uh, I don't think it's, uh, regressive. I mean, I, I think we all understand what the word means, but, uh, we said, someone said earlier about, you know, I don't think the, the day-to-day implementation of this by the city manager, uh, i- is all of a sudden is going to be so harsh that this is, this is, you know, this is harsh. Uh, so I got faith in him, and I got faith in, in the police department, I got faith in our public works. Uh, but I think we all can give examples, and I just want to give, uh, one or two. You know, you know, someone standing in the median, uh, is a dangerous situation for all, everybody that drives by there. Right? And, and, you know, so we have to think about that. It's, and then today, just riding around, you know, it was someone that didn't have a, a, a proper, doesn't have a proper address. And they was brought out blocking the whole sidewalk. And at that point where they were at, you couldn't walk around on the grass because it had a flower bed on this side. And on the other side, it was a car, their car, that was parked right up against the curb. So you would have to walk up and ask them to move out the way to pass by. Right? And so I'm sure they probably would have did that, but I know better than anyone else how, how it is, how tough it is. But this seems like a balanced approach to me by the city of Seaside. We are not stepping away from our care and our compassion for those that don't have, uh, a proper address. And my last point is, uh, someone mentioned earlier about, you know, it was, what we did was wrong or what we did was bad when we had COVID and people were at the, uh, Roberts Lake area. And then once that died down, so to speak, uh, we, we had those people move on. What they left out is we had them move to Colonel Durham with electricity and hot water for several more months. And so when you talk about the city of Seaside, we always step up, and we will continue to step up. And I have faith in our staff, city manager and his people, that this is not some type of way to criminalize people that don't have a proper address. But if we're going to be neighbors, then everybody needs to be a neighbor. And if you don't have a, a, a proper address, that doesn't mean you get to be a bad neighbor by leaving your, leaving trash on the sidewalk or on the curb. And I know everybody does do that, so I'm not going to lump everybody together. And I would ask everybody, don't lump this city council together as though somehow we're violating somebody's, uh, First Amendment rights. And then I, I can, I, I can just about guarantee the city attorney is not letting us violate anybody due process. I can guarantee that. So it's good to hear those questions and it's good to hear those concerns, but if you read this document, this is not used to punish people. This is used to clarify things and, and I'm supportive of it. Uh, and so I would ask the clerk to call the row.
Council and agency member Miller. Council and agency member Burks.
Aye.
Council and agency member Garcia Arizola.
Aye.
Mayor Protim and Vice Chair Pacheco. Mayor and Chair Oglesby.
Aye.
Your motion passes unanimously.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, we are at the time for a break, so I would ask that we can go into recess for a period of time to resume at the sign of the government. Go to item number 10A. Approve a mayor's youth fund contribution request of $3,000 from Central Coast High School to assist with the costs associated with their auto detailing program, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This item will be presented by Recreation Superintendent Kian Higgins. Mayor, City Manager, City, City Council, City Attorney, members of the public, my name is Kian Higgins, Recordant Superintendent, and I am presenting item 10A to approve a mayor's youth fund contribution request of $3,000 from Central Coast High School to assist with this, with the costs associated with their auto detailing program. So a bit of a background on the mayor's youth phone uh, program. It's created by supplemental, uh, financial support to students and nonprofit groups, which can include schools, provide services to improve the lives of our young, um, individuals in our community and the city. And to be eligible for this, for this kind of program, uh, need to be students or organized groups such as schools or nonprofit organizations based in Seaside and/or serving a majority of residents of at least 50% that are 18 years or younger when enrolled in the school. A little further about the, uh, oh, evaluation process and the criteria of how, um, these, uh, uh, requests come in and like, how, do they meet the actual criteria? Part of it is scholastic athletics, music, environmental and art activities. So this is, uh, request meet any of these, uh, things that the, uh, youth or groups are doing. Uh, and then evidence of activities related to a, uh, promoting a, a green or healthy environment, uh, and in the policy does state to, we want to really abide by reduce, reuse and recycle as part of this program. So this criteria here is what is, uh, proposed by, uh, Central Coast High School and auto detailing program. So it does meet all the criteria. So the percentage of the students, uh, or the youth in this, in this program is over 50%. It's actually 95%. The number of participants or of the students is actually 40. And the age of the students are 16 to 18 years old. And for the impact of these students, what are they going to get from this program? They're the employable job skills, job-related experience, uh, as in regards to auto, auto detailing, professional mentorship, job preferences, and increased pathways to immediate employment. And we'll kind of go further, but they are going to work with a professional, local, uh, auto detailer that'll come onsite to the school. So there's no transportation going somewhere else. They're going to come onsite there and go through a lot of, uh, uh, good expenses for, for these kids. So the program itself, uh, in alignment with the Career Technical Education CTE pathway, uh, they're going to bring, like I said earlier, uh, um, auto detailer from the area, hands-on experience, on-campus training for interior and exterior auto detailing. Um, there are going to be curriculum, they're going to purchase, uh, and kind of go with it, with the students' materials, which includes cleaning solutions, buffers, shop vacuums, towels, safety materials. And then of this course, which I think is going to be about two months or so, uh, they'll receive a certificate of completion. And the fiscal impacts, so the mayor's youth fund currently without this request is at $56,122.20. With this request from Central Coast High School, it is $3,000 even. And if approved, the remaining balance will be $53,122.20. And recommendation tonight for item 10A is to approve mayor's youth fund contribution request of $3,000 from Central Coast High School to assist with the costs associated with their auto detailing program. And the applicant who submitted this, uh, application is here tonight to answer any questions as well. And I can take any questions.
Uh, thank you so much. Any questions, uh, Councilmember Arizola?
Thank you. Um, who is the professional detailer that's going to be onsite?
I can refer to the applicant who is here. Yeah.
I see, I see.
Yeah.
Good evening, uh, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm Shetal Cafarada. I'm the Community School Coordinator at Central Coast. And the auto detailer is Icy Details, Ivan Sorantes.
Thank you. And is this a after-school program elective course requirement?
That's a great question. Um, at Central Coast, we're a community school and we are challenging the typical structure of schools by not confining school to the four walls of our classroom. This will be during school so that our students have experience and confidence and they leave our system to enter the workforce.
And is this a signup process that the students choose this course or do we place them, or do you place them there?
It'll be selected, they'll, they'll self-select.
So 40 people total with this program. Okay.
Yeah, that's a capacity that we can, um, do.
Gotcha. Okay. Those were my three questions. Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim. Yeah, um, I guess for staff or city attorney. So I didn't, wasn't aware that it was scholastic. So as an example, if, I don't know, Seaside High came in and said, we don't have enough money for books and 50% plus were from Seaside, that consideration would be appropriate?
It, it meets the criteria. So if it's, it depends on the program as well, as far as in addition to scholastic, does it also meet the green waste requirements as far as promoting a healthy, green environment?
Yeah, I'm looking more. And this is my memory. I, I kind of watched a little bit. I don't remember personally remember us giving money for programs that were part of the scholastic process. I remember paying for kids to go to Europe for study for after-school programs, for swimsuits, whatever it be. In my memory, and which is sometimes weak, doesn't remember a program that was for the educational component, which is a responsibility. Oh, some people would think the, the full responsibility of the school district. Is this a, I just never seen that before. And is this a new one as far as the scholastic process that we're, we incorporated other scholastics that I just don't remember? And I apologize for my memory.
I'm, I'm going to defer to the City Manager, Dan News.
So the, the policy does state that it, we do have scholastic as a, a criteria and it would just depend on the activity, right? So if, uh, this is a newer request because it's more towards the CTE program. And I'm trying to, we haven't had anything similar. It's not like the library coming and saying, hey, we want to buy 30 new books, right? This is an actual pro academic program for the commute, for the kids that has some value that is more than just, um, the, the, the requirements of the school. Um, it's like, it's, it's like an extracurricular activity like, like sports, except it's happening within the school day itself. Because the kids are selecting this program. This isn't one that all the kids have access to like a football team. Right? If I'm going to play football, I'm going to sign up for the football team. If I want to enter into this CTE pathway for auto detailing, I'm going to sign up for it. It's not a requirement for all the students, if that makes sense.
So being devil's advocate, a football team is after school for the most part, correct?
Correct.
This program is held during regular school hours and I s- I would bet there, I would guess they're getting one, two, three credits for for passing the class, plus a job opportunity at the, if, you know, depending on how well they do and what they learn and what they can do. As well as a math classes to prepare them to become professors in math.
That is correct. This is just more of a specialty program that isn't available to everybody like a math program. Right? So I think students could take this auto detailing program or they would take metal shop. And we have approved a mayor's youth fund for Seaside High's metal shop and wood shop programs in the past.
Okay. That's a, anyway.
And, and the applicant has some more questions. Is there, she can speak more to that.
So short. Um, I understand your concern and that is during the school day. What we're trying to do is create equitable certificates for our students. At Central Coast, we have some of the most vulnerable students. Um, our students are at risk for not graduating. They've experienced trauma. Um, they are there not because of who they are, but because of the system has failed them. So we are trying to create equitable access. So when they leave our system, they can go into college career. They can go to military, um, they can go into auto detailing. So this is an opportunity for them to learn hands-on skills during the school day. Uh, because a lot of times, some of our students, they may not have this opportunity outside of the school. So we're providing everything we can so that our students have, um, the opportunity when they leave our system to go into a profession that's high-paying.
Yeah. And just on a personal level, I appreciate that. Like an EMT class would do the same thing. I'm concerned that that may be the responsibility. I said, I'm not going to say I'm not going to support it. I'm, I think that's part of the responsibility of the school district and we are just helping supplement something that we have so little money and so many resources. So I'm just concerns that opens doors to provide for a wide range of things when there was the money I thought was earmarked for more after-school programs, more, um, CPY, uh, village project and all those groups that are more after-school or in, uh, experimental programs for things of that nature. So I just, there's just a fine line and I'm worried about going over the line where it takes away from things. It's just a thought and, um, I'm sure it'll be great discussion and I'll ponder the, my thought.
Uh, Councilmember Arizola.
Thank you. Um, touching on the subject, which Councilmember Pacheco mentioned, um, how did? I, I see that the total cost of this program would be 6,200. Where are you acquiring the, the other half of the funding?
Um, I'm braiding funding from our ELO funds and then some community school funds that we have.
Is, is the district putting money into this?
Yes.
Okay. Um, how did the auto detailing come to be? Like the program in itself, how was it developed, conceptualized?
Yeah. So, um, Ivan has a shop and at his shop, he does this program. He's done it a few times in Salinas. And so when I researched, um, like certificates for our students, this, um, auto detailing shop popped up. A lot of our students are already doing mobile auto detailing, but they don't have the actual training. So this gives them the training. There's also a business component to this, um, but that would put this, um, at $9,000. And so that was too much out of our budget. And so that's why I'm braiding funding with hopefully the mayor's youth fund, community school funding and our ELO funds. Um, so he's done this work in Salinas and I'm trying to bring it here because our students are already doing this work. They just need the training so that they can either start their own business or so when they leave, they can go to, um, a dealership and walk on and have the experience necessary.
Awesome. And then one last question, which I thought was sort of interesting and I want to learn a little bit more about is the eco-friendly auto detailing practices in which you describe here or outlined in the application. And just an example, water conservation methods and, um, biodegradable cleaning products. Can you just elaborate a little bit on that?
Yeah. Uh, when I talked to Ivan about this, uh, I did mention that we will be going for, um, funding through the mayor's youth fund and that's one of the requirements. I am not, um, an auto detailer, so I'm not a hundred percent sure about the products that he uses. But, um, they are environmentally friendly, he assured, and, um, water conservation will also be taken into consideration.
Awesome. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else? Any questions? Okay. Thank you so much. Hey. So, uh, you know, I had some of the same concerns that the, the mayor pro-
So, uh, you know, I had some of the same concerns that the, the mayor Pacheco had. Uh, but, but you, you did, uh, I guess, uh, Director Milas, you have more back, or do you want me to do Kian? You want me to do Kian? I'll do Kian. Come on up. So it was said that, uh, you know, we did fund the wood shop before, the metal shop before. And so, you know, I'm supportive, but my concerns are that normally what we try to do is have the youth group for the mayor's youth fund. And then the money goes to, uh, their fiscal sponsor and sometimes that's a nonprofit. But, but are we saying the school district or Central Coast High School is a nonprofit? Is that what we're saying the school district is?
It's, yes, yeah.
It qualifies as a, yeah, well, I guess they do spend all the money they have, but they start off with a lot of money, don't they? And so you know, where does, kind of like where does it end if, if we're doing these type of programs? And, and the thing is, it's not like they're not important. But it's not important for the school to do it all. And so what do we do? And that's what the council has to decide, you know, going forward is the, the needs of the school cannot be met by the funding from the mayor's youth fund consistently. And, 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 you know, because first it was, I guess I'm talking to Ethan now, you can sit down. Yeah, first, you know, you answered my question. First it was, you know, like the mayor Pacheco said, you know, after-school program, after-curricular, because the school said, well, we can't fund that because that's after-school and that money is not for educational, so-called educational purposes. Or then, you know, we, we were, that's the, that's what we started using the money for. And, and so now we're creeping into actually funding classroom activities. Again, not extracurricular, you know, if kids want, you know, some birthday cake, if they want something like that, right? We, we pour money in there. Uh, but if we're talking about the curriculum, right, the supplies to teach them something, then, then where is the parameters around that? Um, but I know this council want our kids to have that training and, and education. And that's one question I did have is what was the part about the business part? For the, how, you know, and I understand a part about that was extra three thousand dollars, but what was that supposed to do? If you guys had that money? Because it's hard for me to hear you say, you know, right now they're doing it. We're trying to teach them how to do it professionally and maybe they'll go into it. But we're not going to teach them the business side, and I understand why you can't, but I just want to understand what more of the business side. How do you see that was going?
Yeah, so, uh, Ivan talked about how he set up his business, um, in terms of making sure that you are doing the right price quote. So some of our students that are doing this business are not setting the right price quote, so they're not working for the right amount of money.
Well, I guess my question is, what does the extra three thousand dollars get you? He, another, like, um, he comes in and just gives them that class portion?
Yeah, he starts doing the business portion. So in lieu of that, we are going to use our financial, uh, literacy class to teach how to set up the business side. Um, so we were able to cut costs that way.
Okay. Oh, so you still probably be able to get it done?
Yes, but just with our financial literacy teacher on campus.
Okay, okay. Thank you, thank you for that. Let me just. Okay, again, we're open up for public comment. If there's, if there's any.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone.
Daryl Shokay, and only a couple of things concern me when she said that these kids, these kids are the kids that don't, or cannot behave in regular school. That's why we have a continuation school. So that needs to be corrected. They've had issues to get to this school. This is a private, not private, but a school that was put together in, um, eighty-five to make sure that we can still keep them in a school, but a special school, meaning special assistance. So I understand. My concern is, does the school board even know about it? Does, because in dealing, and I deal with a lot of them, there's a lot of chemicals, a lot of chemicals they got to deal with and know it and understand it and not cross mix or all that stuff. So I want to know, does the school board even know about the program? It can't be a teacher just deciding that I think we can do this, this money. Second, um, we even know how many seaside residents are involved? You know, for three thousand dollars, are we getting one resident? We got zero residents. Majority of this school used to be most, uh, Marina citizens. So we need to know that. Um, and the last thing is, I know it's probably changed a lot when we started this program. The mayor's youth fund was the money that we received from recycling. I don't know if that's still where the money comes from. Oh, good, good. At least that's still around. But those are the things I'm concerned about. Because when they open them doors to start teaching these kids, there's a lot of liabilities. I don't think that this school has even focused on or thought about. And they're going to need a special insurance. So will our money help? Probably, but I just want to make sure that we're not just opening the door like I heard the mayor say, because it's going to open the door. This is a new one.
Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. I am here to speak in support of this, um, specifically because this request is not just about one program or one individual. It's about the bigger vision of what Seaside can commit to through the community schools model of N P U S D. So to answer the last person's, um, comment, yes, N P U S D, um, has designated all of seaside schools as community schools. Recently, the city of Seaside Schools were awarded federal community school fundings because it, it recognized, it was recognized as a low-income community with tremendous need and even greater potential. Those dollars were designed to ensure that all of our schools, not just one campus, become true hubs of opportunity where education is supported by partnerships with the city, local organizations and families. In that model, schools are not just places for academics. They are community centers that connect young people and families with mentorships, trainings, wellness, resources, career pathways and enrichment opportunities. This item directly contributes to that vision. By supporting the applicant's efforts, we are building exactly that kind of collaboration. The community school model calls for bridging classrooms with real-world opportunities and ensuring our young, our youth are not just taught, but they are truly supported. It is important to highlight that this request is not just about basic academic supplies. It is all, it is about addressing the broader needs of our students, especially those in our schools who represent some of the most at-risk youth. These students need more than books and pencils. They need role models, mentorships and opportunities that connect them to their community and their future. That is what this effort provides. I would also respectfully ask Councilwoman Burks to elaborate further on how this item connects to the federal community schools funding model that N P U S D has rolled out and the city's broader goals for collaboration. This is exactly the kind of alignment and partnership the mayor's fund dollars were meant to support. And it is important for our residents to see how local decisions build upon that federal, that investment. Supporting this application means you are living up to the promise of the community schools. Collaboration between cities, school and communities, equity by investing in low-income and at-risk students, impact by turning uh, dollars into real tangible outcomes for seaside families. This is one of those opportunities to show what it looks like when we align local action with federal resources. But, uh, local schools create an ecosystem of opportunity for all. For those reasons, I start strongly urge you to vote yes. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor.
Annalisa Bichos, seaside citizen. I don't understand the part of all of those chemicals, but I will say that those young people deserve a fair chance in life. And if we can be of any assistance, let us be of assistance. Because some of the situations that they are in, um, we can't concentrate on what was to get them to where they are now, but we can concentrate on what is, and that's making sure tomorrow is better for them. Thank you.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment. I'm sorry, there is someone just raised their hand. The caller ended in four, four, three, six. You now have the floor to make your public comment.
So this is Eloise Shimigan, and, um, I used to be a substitute teacher at Central Coast High for many years. And, um, yeah, those kids, they need every bit of help they can get. Really, because, you know, they don't get much support really. Even the teachers, a lot of times they wouldn't show up for them. That's why they would call me, they would call me at like eight o'clock in the morning and say, Miss Shim, if you can just, we don't care when you get here, just get here. So, you know, it's already, they ha, they don't have a lot of support at home. Some of them are homeless. And, um, they need all the resources that they can get so that they feel like somebody has their back. Because in their lives, my experience, they didn't feel like anybody had their back. You know, even the counselors there sometimes would look at me as a, oh, you're upsetting them. You know, when I wasn't upsetting them, I'm, I'm just trying to be there for them. So it's, it's a very fragile situation over there at Central Coast with those kids. So they need all the resources they can get. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Mayor, at this time, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Public comment remains open.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. No members have come forward to make public comment.
Uh, thank you so much. Yeah, no one else. Uh, public comment is closed. Bring it back to the dice. What is the will of the council?
With approval.
Second. So pop to move to second on the question.
On the second, I want to support this, but I think it's a slippery slope. Because often teachers have to go out and buy pencils, crayons, paperwork on their own pocket money. Do we start supporting that? Do we support, does the school districts help pay for us painting sidewalks? I just think, need to be careful where all our funds don't go to support the school district. So I'm just saying, I think it's important. I think it's important just for those children as those that are based out of Monterey or Terrace or Seaside High or your school. It's, everyone deserves to have the best opportunity as possible. And we can't pick and choose what we want. But I just think this council and the city needs to be very cautious about what we do, how we do it, and how often we do it when there's a wide range of needs out there. I just, when you, you opened the door a while back, I, I guess with the wood, woodworking program, with the doors open. And I'm just concerned that door gets wider all the time. And we have so limited resources. And we just need to be careful. And I'm just very um, cautious about what we do, how we do it. And is it a balanced approach with the school district helping the city? I'm sure to some level it is. But we have to be aware, the bottom line is, I think we have to beware not only your school, but all the schools in seaside. And just to be careful, because I think the door may be open where we can't close it down the road. That, that's my only thought. Thank you, Mayor.
Uh, anyone, uh, Councilmember Miller?
Yeah, I just have a hard time with the slipper-slip argument. One of the reasons why I'm on this council and, and, and I got involved in politics is because I witnessed myself a shooting that happened in seaside with kids at Catino Park. And every dollar that we invest in our kids is a dollar worth investing. And, and yes, the school district has responsibilities. But this is an extra activity that our kids can get excited about. This city has car week. It fits nicely with our city. Uh, I understand, you know, the, 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 the argument that, oh, well, what, what's next? Are we going to be giving books and whatnot? We're going to cross that bridge when it comes, I think. And this is not general fund dollars. These are dollars that are specifically allocated to help and support our community, and that's what this does. So I support this. Thank you.
Uh, anyone else?
Yeah.
Uh, council member?
Um, so just to clarify, the applicant did share that they used multiple sources. And so the community schools fund is what, exactly what she had shared is that it's a way to partner with, was what she's doing with Ivan. Partner with the city, partner with anybody. E L O, those are after-school funds, so they're pulling that in as well. I think what's difficult to understand is that if it was a club at a traditional school, we'd be like, oh, yeah, it's football. Oh, yeah, it's, it's after-school. Um, but Central Coast is not a traditional school. Like she said, these are students that have been through trauma. The school system has not supported somehow and it's been, they've been failed. And so it's a way to find an alternative to get them back on track and to prevent them from being on the streets, getting incarcerated, whatnot. And so I think definitely I could see the side of where, like, at what point do we stop? Um, the funding, but for these kids, like, to me, it's one hundred percent, it's what they need to get on track, may not be traditional. And that's, I think, what's great about seaside is thinking out of the box to support our youth.
Anyone else? Uh, Councilmember Garcia.
I have to agree with Councilwoman Burks. I, I think, and Councilmember Miller, this is an opportunity that we're granting a non-traditional school for students to feel like they are being seen and being heard. And that's why I asked, how did this program come to be? It was in the interest of our community members. And if these students are already doing this informally, why not get the certification and training with the help of the city of seaside? So I think it's a great opportunity that we have here. Uh, do I think we need to relook at how this, these types of requests come in the future? Yes, uh, but that should be a discussion, I think, with N P U S D at some point.
Uh, and, and that's where I come in at. That was the whole point is for us to understand, at a certain point, we had to talk to N P U S D about what's going on. Because this is non-traditional. So to, to say, well, uh, uh, these kids are not traditional, but it's okay to do the football and, uh, basketball and the jerseys and stuff like that. But for these kids, we need to do auto shop. No, the district need to be doing auto shop. Okay, that's, that's the thing. If you talk about you care about kids, then we need to get together and talk to a school district. But the, the point is for us to use this money and this fund, we have to figure out how to get this untraditional. For me, that's my responsibility. How do we get this untraditional into that square peg, into that round hole? And so no one is saying those kids don't deserve anything. They deserve everything. But how do we do it with this funds of money? And, and at a certain point, it's just an agreement between three, it's just an agreement. But we had to be protective of this money because that's the requirement. Not only, uh, what is it, reduce, recycle, reuse, but it's also for, um, those things that, that traditionally are not paid for, that should be paid for, when I won't say should be paid for. But like I said, after-school programs, extracurricular programs. And, um, to supplement the costs. I think this one is, is close to doing half, which is okay. Uh, someone asked about how many of our seesaw kids, seaside kids in there? I tried to do the math. I think it's like thirty-eight. You do ninety-five percent, you know, something like that. I don't know. Right? But, so the number of kids are there. But how do we make sure that we know that we're close to whatever line internally we have? Uh, and so, because the next person is going to come with the expectation of doing something just as important. Whether it's, well, I won't even say traditional against natures, whether they're at another school or not, is their auto uh, program, their wood shop and their metal shop is just as important, right? Um, um, to the kids that are taking it. And, and to be clear, you said that, that forty number- And, and to be clear, you said that, that 40 number is the max the kids sign up. So hopefully they max out. And my last point is, um, you know, when people talk about, well, our kids deserve it. Yeah, you're right. They do deserve it. But to supplement what the school district is not doing with this little $60,000. Right? Because we could, if the, if the, if the, if the program said 9,000, well, we would say 9,000, okay. But we only start with 60. So that can only, that can only chop up so many times. And so the, these kids are, are well deserving. Uh, this is a good program. What I wanted to say earlier was that, you know, if you're talking about, I didn't know that you worked in the business program. So it may be a possibility of that, that social service grant. You know, to, if the program is, I don't know why you're teaching me how to detail a car. He ain't gonna teach me how to start a business. Right? And so if the money, if there's a little extra money that may be needed, it's possibilities that the social service grant funding is open. Uh, and we'll be talking about that in the next two, two weeks. You know, definitely in the next two, uh, meeting cycles. Um, because again, the object is not just to, uh, for me to teach them how to clean a detailed car, but it's how to collect the money. And what is it? Uh, rate of return on your investment. That's where it comes down to. So I'm in support. So I guess it's been mostly been made. Uh, all those in favor use a regular sign voting, which is aye.
Aye.
Nays have the same right, uh, abstentions. Uh, here and nuns, ayes have a motion carry unanimously. Uh, we go to a business item 10B. Adopt a resolution authorizing the use of the city-owned parking lot on Contra Costa Street and the closure of Contra Costa Street to through traffic from Palm Avenue to Broadway Avenue for the seaside music festival. Ooh, that's, that's, that's sound big. On Saturday, October 4th, uh, 2025, uh, Mr. City Manager.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Once again, we'll hear a presentation from Dan Mewes, Assistant City Manager.
Good evening, honorable mayor, members of city council, city manager and staff, Dan Mewes, Assistant City Manager. And now we're going to be discussing the, um, adopting, potential adoption of resolution, closing the street, Contra Costa, and allowing, um, the organization to use our seaside parking lot number one for the seaside music festival. So a bit of the event background. So, um, special event application from the representatives of, of a group of lower Broadway and Fremont businesses. Um, they're, they have proposed to host a seaside music festival on Saturday, October 4th. They're, they're, um, promoting 20 to 30 local vendors, variety musicians that provide a vibrant community event. And it supports promotion of local businesses on Broadway. A little bit of the details and the requests. Um, the event, like I stated, is on Saturday, October 4th from 12:00 PM to 7:00 PM. The amenities, they'll have seating, signage, restrooms. The applicant will be providing their own insurance. And the request of the city is to close the road from Contra Costa, um, from Contra Costa to Palm on the, uh, let me rephrase that. Contra Costa Street, from Palm to Broadway, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM. They want to use parking lot number one for the event location and their vendors and the music. And they want to use the city stage, uh, to enhance the, the ambiance of the event. So we'll look at the map of the proposed event location. Um, the shaded areas in yellow show the city parking lot number one, as well as Contra Costa Street. The red, the red lines will signify where the barricades will go for the street closure. So this event, you know, does have community benefits. It will support 20 to 30 local vendors, provides music and culture and a community gathering space. Um, it's strength, frank strengthens the lower Broadway business corridor, has a potential for economic growth, and prevents activity on Broadway within increased pedestrian friendly zone. Fiscal impact is $800 for, um, traffic control and support from public works, as well as the stage setup and removal. So the estimated cost is $1,139. And the event organizers, um, pay all of the associated costs. So the recommendation is to permit the closure of Contra Costa and the use of the city-owned parking lot with the stage for the seaside music festival on October 4th. We have been answering any questions and as well as the applicant is here with some of the business owners.
Uh, thank you so much. Uh, questions, Mayor Porte?
I'm sorry, just to verify. The organizer respond, according to your report, the organizer responsible for the $300, the $839 for the staff or the stage setup. And the bathrooms are who's responsible for the bathroom?
The organizer will be paying all associated costs, so they will be bringing in the bathrooms and they'll be doing that on their own. So the, the costs that are, that were outlined here are the costs that are for the city, uh, staff that will be doing all the work.
And so that discussion was held at a planning state meeting with the organizers in the city, I assume that.
We've been back and forth, uh, discussing the, the details prior to, uh, the, the meeting tonight.
And I think this is potentially a really good idea as far as starting off small and, and potentially or not growing. For the, but for this year, Broadway will remain open as I hear it and hear this, what you reported.
That's correct.
That's true. That, that's a, thank you, sir.
Hi, anyone else?
Yes, just one quick question. I'm drawing a blank on the application. If there's alcohol involved.
There's no alcohol involved.
There's no alcohol.
No alcohol. No, no alcohol within the vent venue outside. If they go to one of the other venues in, that stays with inside that restaurant or any of the other businesses that allow it, that is up to the restaurant, but there will be nothing on the street in the vent venue in the parking lot.
Okay. They, they, they won't be selling alcohol on the street or in it, or.
They will not be selling it or consuming it on the street or in the parking lot.
Okay. So, did, did, I'm sorry, uh, uh, Councilmember Garcia is on.
Thank you. Can we go back to slide four? I just want to go to the map and confirm something. In the application, it says that the alley would be open for emergency vehicles. Is that the red lines that I'm seeing?
Yeah, the alley is open, um, and so the emergency vehicles can get there as needed. And it will be like a barricade that can be easily moved if needed.
Thank you.
But not easily ran into.
It would be our standard, um, type three barricades that we use for road closures.
I, I'll just, I'll, I'll, I'll let the chief of police, if he signs off on that, then I'm, I'm comfortable. Uh, what I want to, well, who, just for example, right? Because we don't know about the planning meetings. Is someone taking care of the trash? Is this, is that, was that discussed?
That would be, um, taken care of by the event organizers.
Is that something you guys talked about?
That was not, um, full fledged job, but that is the understanding of the staff.
And that's my concerns, uh, going forward. And we'll, we'll, we'll have the, the council with the city manager talk about how we check these things out and how do we sign off on before they come to the council. Right? Um, is there anything, uh, anything else? Okay. So, so someone said about bathroom, how many bathrooms?
They will be providing, I believe, 188 and three regular toilets.
You don't know?
I don't know how the exact details yet.
Okay, that's, that's important for us to know. Uh, you know, I, I'm comfortable with it, but what I'm, what I'm doing is those are the things that we're concerned with. I'm, those are the things I'm concerned about. And so I don't have no doubt that it would be taken care of. But those are some of the things I want to hear about. And I shared this with the city manager before, but I, I won't, you know, this is not about this applicant. But, um, so okay, we'll open up to the public.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Carla Lobo, you now have the floor to make your public comment.
Thank you. I'm here tonight to speak in strong support of this application and the resolution before you. The applicant has consistently been a beacon for our community, not only by sharing phenomenal musical talent, but also by creating opportunities that bring people together across age, culture, and backgrounds. Music is not just entertainment. It is a universal language of healing, joy, and connection. By approving this festival, we are expanding the very heartbeat of our community. Over the years, this business owner has done more than put on concerts. It has created safe spaces where young people can experience live music, where families can gather and where local artists can showcase their gifts alongside regional and even national talent. The exposure inspires the next generation, nurtures, nurtures local creativity and tells our residents, your city values your culture. The applicant has also shown through action with community partnerships, what that looks like. They have collaborated with schools, nonprofits, and small businesses, providing stages, mentorships, and opportunities for local vendors. That kind of community investment has a ripple effect. It builds confidence, creates economic growth, and brings new energy to our city. Approving this festival is not just about more music. It is about growing the positive impacts we've seen already. More opportunities for local vendors to thrive, more space for nonprofits to connect with the public, more young people exposed to positive role models in the arts, and more reasons for residents and visitors to see seaside as a vibrant cultural hub. This festival is also a statement about who we are as a city. While other communities are losing cultural programming, we are choosing to invest in it. While others are struggling to bring people together, we are embracing a proven gathering place that fosters unity, celebration, and pride. We often talk about wanting to highlight the positive stories of seaside, and this festival can be one of them. To approve this is not just a good idea. It is a fruitful investment in our side and this festival. I strongly urge you to vote yes tonight. Support this applicant, support the music, and support, support the growth of a cultural tradition that will uplift seaside and make us proud to call it home. Thank you. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you for your comments. Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no other members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Uh, thank you so much. Public comment is closed. Bringing it back to the dice. What is the will of the council?
Motion to approve recommendation, second.
Uh, so probably moved to second, uh, that we approve, uh, staff recommendations. Uh, other questions? Any, any comments? All those in favor use a regular sign of voting, which is aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nays have the same right. Abstentions. Ayes have a motion carrier unanimously. All right. All right, next we go to the city attorneys. We'll go to item 11, 11A, new council member's request. Uh, one is provide a report on domestic violence and consider establishing a committee or task force focused on domestic violence issues. Councilmember Garcia is on.
Thank you. Um, the reason this idea came up or this, we brainstormed, uh, this was because of the rising numbers of domestic violence that, uh, I, I've seen have been the posts that I've been seeing on our police department, social media, and I think it is something that we should be raising awareness of. Uh, it's not only increasing here in Seaside, but it's increasing throughout the state and at a national level. I think it's, it, it would be helpful for us or to set a ad hoc committee to, not a committee, an ad hoc group to discuss with key leaders or organizations that are already doing this work. And then, uh, possibly come back and, uh, provide some sort of recommendation or funding. I think, if I'm not mistaken, uh, we allocated some funding in our budget for a specific domestic violence prevention program type of thing or to abort this issue as a whole. So the idea is to create a ad hoc, um, an ad hoc committee and discuss this a little bit further.
Yeah, what else? That's the, that's his 92nd, uh, I guess, pitch. Is there an, an agreement with that or there's enough support for that to, to? You, you're talking about just trying to look into and understand and, and you know, I get, you know, find ways to, to limit domestic violence. We got to put it in a way that staff can understand it. So go ahead.
Yeah, um, I'm in support of it. It was something we've discussed, um, how we can bring or expand the resources we already have here in Seaside. Um, and again, I've also seen an uptick, um, in domestic violence and how we can support the community so that there can have those resources here in Seaside and not have to go for their way to get help.
Uh, anyone else? So, um, yeah, I've been, I've been listening to Councilman Burks for a while, saying that's something that she's been focused on and, and trying to get done. So I mean, I, I guess you guys are always able to, to work together in a sense and, and bring something back to the council. I don't know. You said the money's in the budget. I don't know. I don't know how much it is, but of course, before that expenditure, that has to come back for the council. But yeah, go out there and get the information and, and I don't see how that, that hurts. Okay, that's, that's enough right there. A follow-up on previous requests. Oh, is there any new requests?
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor. I, I have a few, I have a couple of new requests. My first request is an update and a status on the San Pablo Bridge. Uh, that thing has been closed for, since I've been on the council. Uh, and then my other question is, uh, we heard, or my other request is, we heard several, uh, public comment today about exotics, and I'm wondering if it, if we, if we start that now or if we start that in preparation of the la- of next year. We start it now, then we'll be able to consider all the people that have comments about this year. So I think maybe I will, uh, make that request.
I, I think I understood the, the first one about the update on San Pablo Bridge. I, I thought the city manager put out something today for an update for the council. So you talk about, uh, for the council, you talk about for the public.
Um, can the city manager, uh, refresh my memory?
Staff will provide an after-action report on Car Week, including.
We're not handling Car Week. I'm talking about the bridge.
Right.
Yeah. That was, that was the first one. So I'm, so the question is, I asked him, do he want you to report to us? Or do he want a report to the community?
Um, I, I, I think I, I'm looking for, uh, ways that we can have the bridge reopened.
Oh, okay. Wow. Hold on. What, what I heard was, then that's a status update. Okay, so how do you want to handle that, Senator?
Should the rest of the council agree on this request from the council member, that staff would be happy to provide an update in a future city council meeting on the San Pablo Bridge project?
I don't, I don't see anybody disagreeing with that one.
Just one quick question. I thought I saw in my report today that, and don't, $850,000 is being going through the process for Panetta. We know that there's $420,000 in the city. Would it, has that already been done via the $850,000 that's going through that process? That's my only question for you. Is that something that you've already provided via the staff report, or do we want to go out to the general public with that?
Yeah, I, he, he authored a report today with the update. I think the whole council got it. And that's why I say, was the report to the community facing? Right? And so there's no, I don't think he has a problem given that. So we'll put it on the agenda. That's, I don't think we need to try to get three votes for a simple update. So next meeting, uh, there'd be an update. Then the question was about how do we gather information, I thought, about Car Week? And again, I thought you said earlier that you would have an update for us in September.
Staff will provide an after-action update on Car Week, including exotics on Broadway on the second meeting in September.
Thank you. But, and will that meeting allow us to, is it discuss the future of this or is that way too soon?
Should the council decide to discuss the future of it? That's the will of the governing body, that meeting.
Okay, well, then, then, Mr. Mayor, I'll hold off on this request until the presentation, but likely I'll bring this request back after the presentation. Thank you.
So let me, so I can understand. So you're saying your request is to talk about the future of whether we do the exotics on Broadway or not?
Um, I, I, I wouldn't. I, I, I wouldn't say like, I wouldn't say it's, I'm asking that. I'm just asking to have a future discussion about how we see this going forward. Because I think it was a contentious issue in our community. And I, I, I think that community members do want to come down and express their opinion. And then that, and I would like to, to have that be available so that people, it's fresh on people's minds. We just had the event so people can come down and, and express their opinions for next year.
Yeah, I, I won't get into a lot of details. That's not on the agenda, but the public is free to, to take their three minutes to talk about what they don't like about the Zaxx on Broadway anytime. But to hold a, an agendized item to hear those, those concerns is a different subject. And so if the council wants to, to use that time to gather that information, then, then I would be supportive of that. That's what I'm trying to get down to. I don't mind hearing people say they don't want it or they do want it. I'm just trying to get to, the city manager said he's going to have a update for us in September. We could turn that into, well, if he's going to give us an update, well, then we can have the citizens come down there and say what they like and what they don't like. You know, get two birds with one stone, if that's okay with you.
That's my request. Yes, thank you. Yes.
Uh, thank you so much. Anyone else? So follow up on previous requests.
No additional follow-up to see, need to see any mayor.
Item number 12, city attorney, city manager, city council and mayor's comments and reports on community assignments and committee assignments. Uh, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. I had the wonderful opportunity to help at the luau luncheon this afternoon, earlier this afternoon, which is a really great event. I was happy to be able to squeeze a little bit of time in my day to help out. I attended a Phosbike cleanup a couple of weeks ago in, and I was also able to attend the very last Blues in the Park. Wonderful day, wonderful music, wonderful time. And that is my report.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I was able to attend a workforce housing solutions summit on August 14th, sponsored by the Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. It was great to see staff there discussing numerous projects here in Seaside. On, also on August 14th, I was able to join council member Garcia Azola and police chief Nick Borges for a police and community safety meeting at the San Pablo Episcopal Church with co-potent communities organized for relational powers in action to discuss concerns regarding federal immigration policies and simply to continue the conversations, the critical conversations and dialogue in our community. On Monday, I was able to attend a town hall hosted by Mayor Tim Pacheco. Another good opportunity to continue to engage with the community. And then reiterate on Saturday, there'll be an understanding affordable housing meeting on, at 10:00 AM at Silverfield, hosted by KB Bakewell and several other entities. And then finally, I just want to say thank you to staff for Car Week events and activities, especially Exotics on Broadway. Appreciate my police department, fire, public works, economic development. And then of course, our assistant city manager, Dan Meeulus, who is helping coordinate with event organizers. So just wanted to speak thank you to staff for getting through that week with positive results.
I thank you so much. Councilmember Mel.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Today I had my CHS meeting, a great meeting, strategic planning about the future of the organization. Of course, with our support and a little bit of dollars that go to them. Also, I had my Ambag meeting last Wednesday. It was a 12-minute meeting. It was the record. So not much to report there, but I will report through the next meeting, we'll be going over the arena numbers again. I was fortunate enough to go to the car event this, this past weekend, the paddock at Bayonet Black Horse and Exotics and, and great events for Seaside. I was really, really surprised about how many people came to our community and were, was enjoying themselves. And also the Porsche event and also the BMW event, both all really great events. And then on last Tuesday, I was with the Bridge Restoration Project, which is a rehabilitation for men who suffer from alcohol abuse. And they're doing great things and are looking to somehow get involved with the city of Seaside. And that is everything I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Burke.
Yeah, I want to thank police chief, city manager and city council member Garcia Azola for hosting the community meeting. I had a school event, so I wasn't able to attend, but I appreciate them listening to community concerns and I look forward to continue to work there with you guys. I did, I was an active member of Car Week. I attended Porsche and BMW, Concorso de Limones, the paddock, which was the first time doing that at Bayonet on that Friday. And Italiano and Exotics definitely was a huge team effort to keep everyone safe. Our, our fire chief, police chief. It was really great to also see such a variety. And there was a younger group, older group, like there was something for everybody in our family. So that was great. Youth Violence Task Force, this was the first time I was able to participate. I guess it's also known as Blue Ribbon. Seaside principals were asked to attend and so it was great to see our police chief run the meeting and all the different partnerships that are out there to support everybody and not just our youth, but our whole entire community. And I also want to thank PNC Bank and the Bakewells. They donated quite a few supplies for back to school for our Seaside.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. I'm sorry, Councilmember Garcia Azola.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to thank both Chief Borges and City Manager McDaniel for joining me on the 14th. I know Councilwoman Burks couldn't make it, but nonetheless, community knew that. She had school duties to attend. Nonetheless, I, I think that event, I want to say like roughly 60 members of the community were there, Spanish speaking, and I know Chief Borges tried his best to speak Spanish and be there with the community. But I think what we're, what we're, what we did was one, restore public trust within our community, right? Try to emphasize the importance of them coming to city hall, the importance of them knowing what a sanctuary city is, what the city of Seaside is doing, where we stand. And letting them know that despite what's going on, they can have a trusted partner here in the city of Seaside. They can come to city hall, access information as needed. They can call the police department and report an issue. They can contact our city manager and really making sure that they know who their government is and what we do as a, as a community here on city hall. So community was very appreciative. I really enjoyed the, the meeting and hearing different concerns from constituents regarding safety, immigration, housing, whatever you can think of. We, it was, it was a listening session that we had and a very good use of, of our time. Tomorrow I have my Regen Board meeting and on Monday I have my Maroon Water meeting. So I expect a report out by our next council meeting. And I too, I just want to thank staff for an amazing Car Week and also our police department for handling the In-N-Out slash Home Depot situation, which I know got a lot of, some news coverage, but again, really being transparent, educating the community and letting the people know what's going on. And then it's good to, to, to see that we have a responsive police department, but also a responsive city manager team that makes sure to, to keep our community informed. And another thing on a side note, I, I did come across a TikTok where there was an interaction with a, one of our Seaside Police Department officers and CHP officers. And just the comments that I was seeing, I think really warmed my heart where it was the police officer, Seaside police officers are completely different than the reaction that CHP was giving them and, and people were supporting Seaside PD. And to me, that reassures me that we're doing a good job, but also thank you for, for your leadership and training, your staff, especially during Car Week. I know it's hectic. I know a lot of emotions are rolling everywhere, but staff kept cool and I appreciate you for that. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Portem.
Thank you. Attending the final week of Sunday Blues with Sunday, and many believe it was the best week of the series. Tenance was really good on the final series and throughout. Wanted to thank Teddy Black and Jackie Perez. And I know the residents appreciated the support by the mayor and city manager that attended all the five-week series. I attended Monterey Seline Strategic Planning Meeting. They reviewed their future goals of MST and they had their state and federal lobbyists there as well, talking about federal government challenges and financial difficulties with the state. Attended Laguna Grande Regional Park Meeting. The permit applications have all been completed with the exception of one. Everybody's hopeful the project will move forward by the end of 2026 to improve past trails and information areas. Attending the Phosbike Cleanup at Lincoln Cunningham. Residents continue to make a difference in the park as that park gets ready to open, hopefully by beginning of October with the new playground equipment. I only attended about three of the events with the Car Week. Lots of energy, lots of entertainment, lots of wide range of community attending. I just wanted to thank, as everybody else has, the police and the fire and staff for all their hard work. And lastly, we held a little town hall meeting, actually about 50 to 60 people. Wanted to thank Father, Father, Fire Chief Paul Blaha and Police Chief Borges for their participation. Good turnout, a lot of interesting comments. And there was a lot of support of them of the exotic cars weeks on Broadway, about 30 people raised their hand. They were excited about Broadway and exotic car work. It was far different than what I personally was expecting, but far majority supported Broadway. And they're very grateful for staff's communication. They want that to continue to improve. So thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'm thinking about before I forget, I, I'm sure the conversation of the city manager's update on Car Week slash Exotics on Broadway won't be complete because hearing, hearing from the community is part of that overall report. So again, we'll need another one after that, if that makes sense, right? And I don't need for him to say my report is complete and then let's hear from the public. Let's not put him in that spot. So attended the the Seaside Sanitation District meeting. Not too much going on there, just, you know, make sure we are cleaning the sanitation pipes and the storm drains and things like that. We do look like we're going to do some work in Delaware Oaks, that's part of the district and Sand City. So we, we, those committees should be seeing some work over the next several months here. Attending the North Salinas Mosquito Abatements District meeting. We had about a two-hour training on governance. So we had a good class and good understanding, good meeting, good conversation about how we can do better work as a team. People mentioned Car Week, which I call Seaside Car Week. And, and so hopefully that, that takes, takes on its own, a life of its own. We have Porsche did a wonderful job with their event. BMW is a new event. I thought it was good, you know? Got too close to those speakers out there, you may, and you get deaf, but those young people, it was exciting. We had a paddock. That's the third car event. We had the, they, even part of that was side effects. They had an event for community members to try to generate. I think, I forgot what night that was. Was it Thursday night or Friday? But they had an event, you know, to bring community members, you know, you know, young people, you know, how do I open up a business? How do I connect? Like a networking type thing. So that was pretty exciting to, to see that they were, they were doing that. That must've been the, what was it? The night before is Friday. Yeah. And then the concourse de Limones, like someone said earlier, that is, is growing and I don't know if it'll outgrow the city hall, but it was packed when I came over. It was packed. And the Italiano was, was well done again. It was crowded. It was packed. And of course, the Zaxx on Broadway. And to be honest with you, I heard good things about all of those car events. And so what, what I would ask the council to do is look at those seven events. And the seventh one was the collection Mirabilla auction in the Embassy Suites. So I don't want to forget about that because that's just as important as people seeing the cars is how do you buy those little trinkets for your car? So that, that's seven events. And I think what we should do is look at holistically about what's going on for Seaside as Seaside's Car Week. And not get bogged down in the difficulties of entertaining our guest of 30,000, we don't know the number right now, 25, 30,000 people on that one day for the Zaxx on Broadway. I, I have some concerns. I, I think most of us shared our concerns with the city manager. He talked about gathering those concerns. So we're not trying to run away from any difficulties, but what I've seen and what I heard was very positive, particularly from the, the people that work and made money. And so sometimes when we talk about, hey, somebody threw trash down or, or some kids on TikTok was, you know, doing something negative. Well, his mother, his daddy probably made a lot of money over this last week. And I'm, I'm being real, I'm being real. We, we, our, our citizens, significant amount of them are hospitality workers. Right? You're not here. There, there's, yeah, right? And, and the extra work that was put on by that week of Car Week, Monterey Car Week is significant. And so it's a balancing act. It's not just the negative. So as we go forward, I look to have, look to, to hear more and to share more of my thoughts on that. Attended the Workforce Solutions Summit by our Monterey Bay Economic Partnership. We appreciate the city manager making sure he had a team out there. And we appreciate assistant city manager Dan Meeulus made sure that our housing collaborative and our economic development group was out there. So it was a county, well, it was a tri-county, Monterey Bay, you know, partnership's tri-county. So I believe they were very comfortable here at Seaside. We appreciate you guys making them comfortable at the Odomar and what they seen that, what we were doing. Attended the Monterey Peninsula Water Management District meeting. You know, some, I asked some concerns there, city manager about water and, and how we're working with Marina Coast Water District. And, and I don't want to have anybody think any different. I have a lot of respect for Marina Coast Water District and their, and their board members. And so hopefully we could continue to work with them and move things forward. Like the mayor Portem said, we ended another successful Seaside Blues in the Park. Very successful. We want to thank the, the mayor Portem for just his oversight of, of that type of, of, of event series. You know, it's over several months and, and city staff and, and Mr. Meeulus and, and Ted Black. I, I call them out because I like, I like the mayor Portem said, I was there every Sunday and I was, sometimes I was there eight-thirty in the morning and I look up, Mr. Black is there, smile on his face and ready to go. Right? So they were out there early and I appreciate the work that they were doing to make the, our guests comfortable by, you know, the lines in the, in the, in the, in the road and stuff, not the road, the lines or in the grass, so they could sit and they could have fun and stuff like that, right? And so it's important when people, because I, because everybody comes, I think they come to all of us and say, how much they appreciate this type of musical event? And I tell people, you know, quite a few of them don't live in Seaside. And that's why I say they're guests, right? And so our residents like to be able to say there's things going on in Seaside. So I want to thank the mayor Portem, but I want to call out the city manager because every time I looked up, he was there and taking in the sights and seeing what can be done better and things like that. Attended the Seaside Housing Collaborative. We're moving forward. We're supposed to be putting out the RFP to try to get some developers to look into how they can, you know, build one little unit. Yeah, so that is what the council wanted. So that's where we're moving forward. The older adult luncheon and dance today was again a great event. Well done. Always get compliments on the, on the food. So the food was wonderful. Tried the lemonade. Couldn't, couldn't drink the lemonade, but that's okay. It's a little tart for me and that's all right, a little tart. I want to thank staff, I want to thank the city staff, city manager, city clerk and staff members for the great-looking side decks today. I don't know if anybody noticed those, those PowerPoints, but they were very professional looking. You can read them. Right? Now you notice it, right? You can read them and the numbers was there in case we referred to us. I want to thank you guys. It's important that that was done. That's not a small thing. It makes the meeting goes a little faster and smoother. Want to thank the fire and, and police department. Want to think the fire and and police department, uh, for their consistent work and, you know, um, responding to calls, just usual calls, and of course. Uh, the week of Seaside, uh, Car Week, uh, and, uh, want to thank them for that. Uh, fire police, they did a great job. And and I did see someone did show me a couple of those, um. Uh, YouTube videos or TikTok videos of of young people and, you know, and. We want to make sure that they're safe. We want to make sure they're not doing nothing negative. Like I told someone else is, wh- where do they go? At nine thirty and that was, I mean, I mean, where do you go at eight thirty, right? Nine thirty, you need to be going home, right? But where you go at seven o'clock, nine thirty at night? Because I got up. From my house, because, you know, I heard a couple of cars making loud noises, right? So I went to go look. And I couldn't find them, because I guess they were too fast. But I went down to the corner of Home Depot. It was a Fremont and and Cade del Rey, and I didn't know what was going on. I just seen all the cars, and I said, I don't want to go to Monterey, because I won't get back, right? But what I'm getting to is the way the police handled that. And that that comes from leadership of of telling them guys how to interact with with their residents, how to interact with people. And and my understanding from the city managers, you know, they they talked to them, they moved them, and then they moved to Home Depot. They talked to them, they moved to them, and then they went home, right? And and everybody seemed to be happy. Uh, in a sense, right? Because it was no, it's not heavy handed. And I want to thank, uh, the police chief for that, because, um. You know, that comes from leadership and professionalism. But where do those young people go? And I don't have an answer, right? But but we have to just realize they're not trying to be negative. They're trying, they're not trying to be negative. They're just trying to, they're just being young people. And so I'm not saying, you know, let them, uh, just hang out, just saying, don't. Don't talk about them as though they're bad people, and I definitely don't support the concept of, uh, because. You know, some people are negative, then Seaside shouldn't have anything. Right? I'm not with that. So I do want to appreciate the police and the fire for, uh, that. And I I think that's that's all I have. So I will ask the city attorney to read us in the closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, members of the public. The council will have a conference with real property negotiators pursuant to Government Code Section five, four, nine, five, six point eight. Property in question is commonly referred to as Campus Town Agency Negotiator, City Manager at All. Negotiating parties are K B B, Seaside Venture, and the City of Seaside under negotiation price, terms of payment, or both. Um. And then there is no need for item B, which was removed earlier this evening from the agenda. For the benefit of the public, I do not expect there to be any, um. Report out of an action taken in closed session.
I thank you so much. I will open up public comment on our closed session items.
Members of the public in the chamber, please approach the podium. Members of the public on Zoom, please use the raise your hand feature or dial star nine if you're calling from a phone. Mayor, no members of the public have come forward to make public comment.
Uh, public comment remains open.